Chaplain Trey Gooch to come forward. He will lead us in our prayer and then lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance and to the Tennessee State Flag. Commissioner Gooch, you're recognized.
So Father, we would ask that you encourage them in their future endeavors and would you grant them good health, peace, and prosperity? Father, oftentimes when we honor and recognize our first responders, sometimes we leave out our dispatchers. I think very few of us here tonight knows the stress that they wait for every day they come to work. And so tonight and forevermore, we honor them, we respect them, and we ask that you would put a hedge of protection, peace, and love around them. And as always, Father, we praise you for Jesus Christ, your Son and our Savior, and we ask for the speedy return where we know every tongue will confess, every knee will bow to proclaim him Lord, and it's through his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming to the historic courthouse for our first full commission meeting of this budget year. For those who are standing and would like someplace to sit, you can go up the steps or take the elevator if you'd like to sit in the balcony. There's plenty of room up there if you get tired. So make yourself at home, but you're welcome to stand where you are. Madam Clerk, time to call the roll.
Commissioner David Gammon.
Present.
Earsay.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Cusch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Sherrino.
Yeah.
Nineteen present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time, I'd like to call on our Chairman Pro Tem, Jeff Phillips, for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Kettering. I've reviewed the minutes. I find them to be in order, and without objection, I move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted as presented.
Have a motion. Have a second. Commissioner Johnson, are there any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Mayor Kettering, I've had a request to remove item 18 from the consent agenda, and that is the resolution declaring Rutherford County, Tennessee a Purple Heart County and move it up to item H in the agenda.
Without objection, request granted. Next, I'd like to introduce Byron Cumby. Byron, are you here? Mr. Cumby, if you would, please come to the well so we could recognize you. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, to all the citizens of Rutherford County, Mr. Cumby is our new Rutherford County Health Department Director. So let's make him welcome. If you would, Mr. Cumby, just briefly tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, coming in on the back end of a pandemic. We hope that it never happens to you, but you've had two good people that preceded you. So we're glad to have you representing us and taking care of the health and welfare of our citizens. So just give us a little background on yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. I have a history in Rutherford County. I first arrived in 1995 and attended MTSU and their Recording Industry Management Program. From there, I spent 25 years in the entertainment industry in Nashville, including 19 years as the production manager for Grammy Award-winning artist Shenandoah. If you've heard Church on Cumberland Road, Sunday in the South, Two Dozen Roses, my former employer there. I did transition into public health. I pursued a degree in healthcare administration at Trebekka and was hired in 2019 by Director Dana Garrett. Under her mentorship and that of John Blair, our current Assistant Director, interim Director, I came to realize I had a heart for public service and a heart for public health, and I attained a great admiration for the people that serve every day to deliver public health services to the people of Rutherford County. And as the mayor noted, we have made it almost through the pandemic. You know, we would like to put that in our rearview mirror, resume the people's business there at the Rutherford County Health Department.
Chairman, Speaker Pro Tem Phillips, I think you would ask for maybe an update on the virus?
If you would, I'm not sure how long you've actually been on the job, but an update on COVID and maybe even what we keep hearing about monkeypox, that kind of thing.
Okay. Certainly, I'll give you what I can. On COVID, our numbers are not in the high range right now, and so we are still, you know, following CDC protocols, but we, you know, of course, you want to be conservative, but we are on the back end of where we have been, and we're glad to be able to say that. Now, with monkeypox, that is in the news now. We have already received monkeypox vaccines, and they are available at the Rutherford County Health Department during our walking hours. There are some criteria that we are screening people for until that full channel of, and we realize our full potential of having vaccines available, but even as of now, those are available.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Cumby. Any questions for Mr. Cumby before he steps down? We look forward to having you working with this new commission, coming on board and watching over the people of Rutherford County. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Next, members, we have item number G on the agenda, Resolution of Appreciation for Public Safety Dispatchers. Commissioner Rather, you're recognized in the well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to do this months ago, but I can explain individually why I didn't. We look in the paper and we see dispatchers, y'all come on, head this way.
Y'all come on up here.
Dispatchers, whoever wants to come with them.
Our attorney doesn't buy. Come on up here.
We look in the paper and look on or see the news, and we see the uniformed officers, the detectives, and everything else, which are vitally important. What I don't see are dispatchers. I don't see them in the paper. I don't see them on the news, and they're kind of the silent and oftentimes not noticed heroes in public safety. The sheriff's office has 24 positions for dispatchers, and they handled 6,735 calls in June. EMS, which includes MA, well, M A, EMS, and fire, they average 6,000 emergency and non-emergency calls per month. Just between EMS and fire, 3,200 calls per month. So I just want to take an opportunity. I actually thought this could have been my last commission meeting, so I wanted to go out with this. Fortunately and maybe unfortunately, I'm back for another four years. Depends on your perspective on that, but so I'm going to read this resolution, and anybody else that wants to speak. I know Director Clark wants to say a few words, so let me read the resolution. Whereas Rutherford County Board of Commissioners honors public safety dispatchers for their selfless commitment for citizens in need, whereas dispatchers are the silent heroes who protect and serve citizens from behind the scenes, and whereas dispatchers serve as the lifeline between callers experiencing difficulties and the public safety responders, whereas dispatchers comfort sick patients and parents whose child is lost, whereas dispatchers listen to the cries of domestic violence victims being assaulted, people suffering injuries in crashes, and grieving family members whose loved ones have died, whereas dispatchers worry about the welfare of their public safety responders, they send to dangerous calls, and whereas dispatchers often do not know the outcome of the calls they forward to public safety responders, whereas dispatchers often miss their children's sporting events, class programs, because they're answering calls for help, and whereas the dispatchers often miss Thanksgiving dinners, family get-togethers, because they're serving their community, and whereas dispatchers are highly trained professionals who are dedicated to fielding emergency calls seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, with little recognition, and whereas dispatchers may not wear a badge, but their care and concern for people, for people are deep in their hearts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners does hereby extend its sincere appreciation to public safety dispatchers, resolve this 11th day of August 2022, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a second. Commissioner Cook and others.
And whoever, whoever else, if that's all.
Let us go ahead and vote on the resolution, and then we'll let Director Clark say a few words. All those in favor of accepting the resolution signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Director Clark? I'm sorry?
I would like to thank each and every telecommunicator that has spoke across that radio to make sure that our personnel are safe in the field, but also to let the citizens know that we have well-trained personnel here to guide them in any directions of safety that they possibly can. But they take home a lot, and we have to remember that what they hear over the phone or what they now is fixing to be video that's going to come across their consoles, that they hear just as bad as the bad stuff as we see out here in the field. This is the hub of our jobs, and without this hub, we would not have that will. And so we really appreciate what they do, how they do it, and how professionally they do it. And very rarely, very rarely, have we ever received a complaint of somebody that was mistreated. They showed compassion, empathy, and we just have some of the most talented people in the southeast working here, right here in Rutherford County, serving our citizens, and we're greatly appreciated. Thank you, guys. While we're talking about public safety, I'd like to bring up the mayor on his last commission meeting. The mayor has had to put up with the chief, the new EMS director, the ex-EMS director back here, Carl Hudgens. He would meet with us each week. There would be phone calls in the middle of the night to update him on tragedies that have occurred, plane crashes, prepare for snowstorms, prepare for ice storms, protests, and many other things that we've went through. And our biggest hurdle has been our COVID-19 pandemic. The day that I was hired or asked to accept this position, I had a meeting at 7:00 PM that night with the state on a conference call, and I think Commissioner Reed was there, EMS Director Carlos Hudgens. And I really thought, what am I getting myself into? Without the support of the mayor and this commission, I don't know how well we would have gotten through it, and so we want to show a little bit of appreciation to the mayor that has put up with us weekly, because we have weekly meetings.
Thank you.
And taking those phone calls in probably some odd times and supporting our public safety through thick and thin, and we appreciate you, Mayor. Thank you for trusting in us. Thank the commission for trusting in us, and we hope to move forward with a new group and a new mayor, but we really want to show you our appreciation for the last four years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chris. I'll just say, thank you, thank you so much. Before I got here, I'd heard that public safety had been left out for a long period of time and not taking anything away from any other department, schools, or anything, and I thank the commission for stepping up and putting the money, buying the right tools, giving these folks, especially the dispatcher. When somebody's choking, somebody's dying of a heart attack, or somebody needs to get to the hospital as quickly as possible, the call comes in first to the dispatchers, and then it's up to the rest of them to make sure that they survive before they get on the way to the hospital. So we owe a lot to our first responders, sheriff's department, everybody that responds, even Paws. They have to wear a bulletproof vest as well. They get shot at. Our firemen get shot at. So public safety plays a very important part, and thank you, commission, for stepping up over the last four years. Thank you.
I'd like to just make a quick statement. I've been on the other end of radio transmissions that these women and gentlemen have been transmitting back and forth, and I'm going to tell you, when you're out in the middle of a rural area and there's life endangerment, your own life might be threatened, which in a lot of cases are. Our police force has that problem. You know, as a firefighter, when I've seen a structure that's fixing to go down and life endangered, and just having those people on the other end of that line, being able to communicate back to me means the world. So I completely agree that these people definitely are well-deserving.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. Members, that brings us to Resolution of Appreciation. I would like to call on, we moved, Speaker Pro Tem bumped item 18 on the consent agenda. We're bringing it in here under H. I'd like to call on, without objection, Andrew Farr. Andrew, if you would, Andrew, please come forward as you're making your way to the well. Andrew is the State VFW Chaplain, and he has a resolution that has already passed Public Safety Committee, and it's here before you tonight to vote on the resolution about us being a Purple Heart County, and you can explain to the audience and to the commission what all that means. Clerk is retrieving that, so you can read it very quickly. Between the clerk and the attorney, we'll see which one gets it fastest. He got it. He got it.
Like the mayor said, my name is Andrew Farr. I'm the VFW State Chaplain. I'm also the VFW Southern Conference Chaplain and the commander of the VFW 12206 post here in town. Resolution to proclaim Rutherford County, Tennessee a Purple Heart County. Whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee, and its community have a great admiration and the utmost gratitude and respect for all men and women who have and are currently selflessly serving their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas citizens of our country and community have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaging in combat with an enemy force, construed as a singular meritorious act of essential service, and whereas Rutherford County seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County, Tennessee shall be hereby proclaimed a Purple Heart County honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedom, resolve this 11th day of August 2022, Rutherford County, Tennessee. This is very important to me because I was given, oh, actually, I received the Purple Heart July 27, 2006, in the horrible town of Ramadi. Forty-seven Purple Hearts were given out that summer. Seventeen were killed, seventeen of my friends, and this designation of a Purple Heart has been given since 1782 with George Washington, but there's only 900 in America, six cities in Tennessee, six counties in Tennessee, and one university. So I think this would be a great opportunity and a great honor to have Rutherford County, the county that I love, that I'm a member of the Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, and a lot of other organizations. I think it would be a great honor to have this.
Sir. You've heard the resolution. Speaker Pro Tem Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Kettering. I move to approve the resolutions proclaim Rutherford County a Purple Heart County.
Motion? Seconded by, I'll just say that seconded by all other members.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Andrew, for coming tonight and helping us recognize we are now officially a Purple Heart County. Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Mr. Chairman, since we have already, we have passed this, and I think it's very important we do so, I know, I see a lot of you at different times when we're up here recognizing the veterans. We have the monument that sits right out here that we do that. I think since we're going to be one of those counties, I think that if Jim and Nix can provide a parking place for a veteran, a Purple Heart recipient, that surely within our town square, we can do some of the same thing. So I plan to be bringing this back to our public safety for us to do the same thing and provide it within our square that if we're going to do this with our, make this courthouse here a museum, that we can also make that a part of what we do here. So we'll be doing that with public safety here with this new commission.
I think that's an excellent idea to bring that back to the new commission. When you come back, you might have to get more than one because they informed me when we opened, cut the ribbon a few weeks ago on our new public, on our new Veterans Center. We have over 21,000 vets in Rutherford County, so when they all come to pay their taxes at one time, you might be standing out there directing traffic. So.
I won't get in their way.
But excellent idea. Thank you so much for that. We have no.
Mayor Kettering.
Yes, sir.
May I approach? May I ask you to join me? Commissioners, I've had the pleasure to serve with Mayor Kettering for a long time. Bill, I believe it was 1990 when we were first elected to the commission. Bill moved on to other things and served county well in the state senate for 16 years and came back home and has served as our county mayor for the last four years. I have a resolution of appreciation in his honor, and I'd like to read it if I can. Whereas Bill Kettering has served Rutherford County exceptionally well for the last four years as county mayor, and whereas Mayor Kettering pushed feverishly for the development of the six public health and safety buildings to provide security and well-being to the citizens across Rutherford County, and whereas Mayor Kettering spearheaded the beautification project of the historic courthouse by revitalizing the property, the 20 North renovations allowing for the relocation of the probation department and creating two floors for a state-of-the-art OIT department, including the green room for the employees to have space and tools to creatively and effectively complete their duties. The Historic Courthouse Museum to preserve our rich history now and in the future, expanded our archives building, honored our veterans by creating the Rutherford County Veterans Community Center, added the Meditronics Program to CWC as a training tool to assist detainees in the ability to find gainful employment, secured the Blackman One-Stop Facility to provide citizens greater accessibility for county, clerk, and DMV services, and whereas Mayor Kettering has led tirelessly, worked to protect the citizens of Rutherford County during the deadliest disease in American history, COVID-19. Surpassing the 1918 flu pandemic, the United States lost 1.3 million lives with 26,862 in Tennessee and 922 in Rutherford County. Whereas Mayor Kettering worked hard to take care of the county's most precious assets, our employees, by reclassifying positions, creating new shifts, and increasing the salary table each year to retain our hard-working Rutherford County employees. Whereas also during Mayor Kettering's term of office, Rutherford County acquired a 888 bond rating. Whereas Mayor Kettering demonstrated his passion for Rutherford County and its citizens in countless ways, his dedication to the welfare of others has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life, and his legacy as a devoted Rutherford County servant and county mayor will continue for many generations to come. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 11th day of August 2022, we, the 2018, 2022 Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, do hereby extend our sincere respect and appreciation to Mayor Bill Kettering for his dedicated service to the citizens of Rutherford County and wish him much success and happiness in all his future endeavors. I move to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I should say something, but I'm gonna wait till the end and hopefully I can get through that. At this point in time, members, I'd like to recognize our newly-elected commissioners and our county mayor. I think they're all, we could say they're commissioners and mayor designate at this point in time and soon to be certified at the State Election Commission. Their numbers will come in. I'm gonna call your name, and if you would, just as I call your name, please stand or remain standing and so you can be recognized. If you're here tonight, Hope Oliver, District 1. Laura Davidson, District 5. Jonathan Beverley, District 9. Anthony John.
Six.
This says nine. I didn't, I read that correctly. Sorry, Jonathan, six. Anthony Johnson, 11. Phil Wilson, District 10. Carl B. Boyd, District 12. Wayne Irvin, District 14. Ramell McMurray, District 19. And Joe Carr, Mayor-elect. Joe's up here on top. Let's give him a round of applause. Commissioner?
Commissioner, we missed one.
Joshua James.
Joshua James.
Congratulations. I'm sorry that we got to six wrong and left one out, but you're just equally as important. Thank you for being here tonight. We need to, we're past a few minutes, members. It's time that we move ahead on the agenda. We'll come back to where we are at this point in time, but as always, we have to move into our public hearing at this point in time. Mr. Demasi, if you will, come forward as we move into our public hearing with, hang on just a minute. Mr. Demasi, you're now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. I'll pull this down just a touch. We have four rezoning requests for your consideration tonight. The first is by Juan Carlos and Claudia Magana. I apologize if I did not say that correctly. This is for property located at 2830 Halls Hill Pike. The existing zoning is residential medium density or RM. Proposed zoning is institutional or IN. Size of the property is approximately 40 acres. The applicants would like to zone this property, or these properties, I should say, to build a church. Information on their application states that they currently have about 300 people in their congregation and that their existing space is essentially not large enough. They are requesting the institutional zoning as they anticipate growing their church to a capacity of 600 people initially and up to 1,000 people in the future. The application, excuse me, the applicant states there would be diverse activities on the property. They plan to include a two-story building for classrooms and a kitchen. And long-term plans include the construction of a fellowship hall. Concept plan has been included on your iPads. You can refer to that. This is not a planned development, so they're not locked into this specific design, but it does give the commissioners an idea on how they want to develop the property. Churches under our zoning ordinance are classified as community assembly uses. This would be a large community assembly. As such, it's not permitted in the residential zones. It has to be institutionally zoned, which is what they are asking for. Development does have access to Halls Hill Pike. It is a three-lane road in this area. We did meet with the applicants prior to their submittal and discussed the need for entrance improvements, possibly a traffic study should the application be approved. We do have some concerns about the location of the proposed driveway they show on their concept plan, but again, that's not a plan that they're locked into. So that is something that we've already made them aware of. The number of parking spots, parking lot design, et cetera, would all be determined through an engineered site plan should this application be approved. They are also required to provide a type-one buffer, which is our lightest buffer, along residentially-zoned property lines. This buffer has an average width of about 15 feet, which can be reduced to seven and a half if they use a solid visual screen like a privacy fence or wall or something like that. Plantings would also be required. The site is heavily treed already. They can use existing material as part of their buffer. That would just, again, need to be shown on the plan that they would submit should this application be approved. Our performance standards for noise, dust, odors, et cetera, would also apply to this. The Planning Commission had some questions about the number of people who currently attend and their current location, which is along with College Street in Murfreesboro. They stated their services are typically on Sundays and Tuesday nights. Staff was asked during the meeting if institutional zoning allows all levels of community assembly uses, churches like this, which it does. The applicant representative also stated at some point in the future, they might want to provide daycare services. That would require some additional zoning approvals, but they are aware of that for now. That's not on the, not on the table. With that, the following of public hearing and the questions from the commission, the application was recommended approved by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
From members, any, any questions of Mr. Demasi? Any questions? Seeing none, I call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue? If you would, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with all applicable planning requirements.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? We'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Demasi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second request tonight is by Max Orlett. This is for Silicon Ranch Corporation located along Highway 269 Christiana Road. The existing zoning is RM, again, residential medium density, and a proposed zoning is for a planned development, PUD, for a solar farm. Size of the site is approximately 43 acres. Materials submitted by the applicant state they intend to construct, own, and operate a 3.25 megawatt solar farm on the property. This facility will be made up of solar panels, an inverter, transformer, and various materials for mounting the solar panels, such as steel poles, cabling, et cetera. Facility is not going to be occupied, although maintenance vehicles will visit the site periodically. As with the last application, there is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda materials on your iPads. This is shown as part of the pattern book. We also included some pictures from a site visit to a similar-type facility in northern Alabama that was visited earlier this year, and it's operated by the applicant, a larger facility, but similar in makeup as to what they want to do on this property. Staff anticipates that the applicant is going to make a presentation. We do have a PowerPoint presentation. I may have to play IT Doug up at the counter there for just a few minutes, so I'm gonna let them go into a little bit more detail as far as the specifics of their application. The development does have access to Highway 269 Christiana Road. The site's going to have a gravel access drive accessing the main road, along with gravel drives throughout the site, to maintain the panels and other equipment. As I stated earlier, the site is not to be manned full-time, and there will not be any kind of an office building, so there's no dedicated parking areas shown in the pattern book. Based on the type of use, there's going to be minimal traffic to this particular property, so we did not request a traffic study. We have requested that the applicant provide a type-two buffer along residentially-zoned property lines. This buffer is a little thicker than the type-one we discussed in our last application. This one has an average width of 30 feet, again, which can be reduced in half if they use a solid visual screen. Additional plantings would be required. There were some concerns as well brought up by some of the surrounding neighbors about the view of the property along the right-of-way of 269. They have also agreed to put a buffer along the front of the property, but again, I'll let the applicant speak more to that. The applicant team answered several questions from the Planning Commission regarding screening along Highway 269, the lifespan of the panels, how they're disposed of, their height, maintenance issues such as that. There was a video presentation made from a resident in the area who couldn't attend the last meeting. I'm not sure if they're here tonight. They are, okay. Thank you. But this video presented concerns about health effects, property values, et cetera, but if she's here, I'm sure she'll, she'll get into that during the public hearing. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application by a unanimous vote. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commissioners, from Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, then I call Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on the request. Our public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue? If you would, please come forward, state your name, your address, if you are for or against the proposed request. You're recognized.
Hi, my name is Janelle Zarin. My address is 3,000 Highway 269 Christiana Road, Christiana. I live directly across the street from the proposed solar farm, from farm site. My front porch is direct, will look directly at the farm. My driveway is opposite of the farm entrance. My husband and I, as well as my neighbors Laura and Michelle, Michael Brockie, who cannot be here due to a sick family member, are unified in their thoughts. They are opposed to placing a solar farm at this location. We are virtually the only ones who will have to look at the solar farm on a day-to-day basis. One reason we oppose this is we feel it will lower our property value. While we understand that if a solar farm is not placed there, something else will be there, including a subdivision, we still oppose a solar farm with a starter home subdivision is not our first choice. We do not feel it would, it would have as meaningful of an impact on our property. For those not familiar with our area, this area is a quickly-growing area that is being built in our larger homes with five-acre lots. It would not fit in our local environment and will become an eyesore. We have chosen to live in a county and do not wish to look at an industrial-looking structure. We do not plan to build a tree, but they do plan to build a tree buffer. I believe it would be difficult to completely block the view of the panels and not to mention the driveway into the solar farms directly across the road from our driveway. We will, we cannot be, ah, sorry. There cannot be a tree buffer for several feet due to that. That means I will likely be able to see the panels from my home, so that, so will potential buyers. The Silicon Farm states that the value of the property will not reduce, will not be reduced. I disagree. Here's why. A recent study in October 2020 on Rhode Island showed prices of homes within a mile of solar installation declined 1.7% and went all the way up to 7% for the homes that are within a mile. This is approximately $42,000 to $50,000, maybe more, my and my neighbor's property. This is significant and should be considered. If given a choice between two homes, there is no doubt that, that many would choose a home away from a solar farm. I know I would. This is a drop in value that cannot be measured, but is worth mentioning. I had a post on the Nextdoor social media, and I noted approximately 50% were opposed and 50% were for. That's 50% of potential buyers. Though this is a small sampling, this is a significant loss in potential, potential buyers. Some of this loss is due to personal health hazards. Silicon Farms will state that the studies show there are no health hazards. I counter and say there are many studies that say there are. So we can't, so we agree that there, the studies are conflicting. With that said, there are some who believe that the solar farm across the road from them will cause harm and that will also, and then they will choose to look elsewhere. In truth, solar farms increase the use of fossil fuels. If you do your research, Germany, who leads the world in solar farm energy, will learn interesting facts. Since solar wind cannot be independent, it requires a higher use of fossil fuels. This focus on green energy has caused Germany to coin a new term, energy poverty. Not only has their energy bills climbed in cost, they are now the leader in fossil fuel use as well. If we start to, if we start and continue to use solar around Rutherford County, this will cost our county and its constituents more electricity and more money. Let's not be the problem. Let's look for a better solution. This is not it. Please do not approve placement of this solar farm in my neighborhood across the street from me.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else desiring to speak for or against the issue? Please come forward. If you would, please state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. Okay, thanks. My name is Max Orlett. I'm with Silicon Ranch Corporation. We are a Nashville-based company at 222 Second Avenue South in Nashville. And I just wanted to quickly and briefly go through an introduction of our company and the project a little bit for, for those who are unfamiliar. So a little background on Silicon Ranch. We are, as I mentioned, a Nashville-based company. We have projects throughout Tennessee, the state of Tennessee, and across the country as well. And we, we take particular pride in our projects in the Tennessee Valley area as we have, we have done many projects in the area. So Silicon Ranch is a full-scale solar company. We develop, design, fund, construct, own, and operate the, the projects that we create. That is, that's a little bit different than many of our competitors who might not own and operate the projects for the long term, but that's something that we differentiate ourselves in, in owning and taking a long-term stake in the communities that we operate So getting into the, a little bit of specifics of this project, we've been working with Commissioner Buchanan and the community members in the Christiana area for, since going back last fall. So we've been working with them, holding community meetings and calls with them to address concerns and questions throughout the process. So that's something that we, we find very important in all of our projects, is the community engagement piece, to make sure that the, the neighbors and the, those who are in the community are heard and, and listened to, and we incorporate that feedback into our projects. So getting into just some of the, some of the overview of the details here, as you can see, as Doug mentioned, this is, this project is off Highway 269 in Christiana. We, from a development standpoint, we look to avoid any major features on the land, specifically water features, including floodplains, ponds, wetlands. This is something that we take very seriously, and this project is no exception there. So we are including buffering from those, those features. Stormwater management is, is something that we take very seriously as well, so we make sure to include basins for that, for those, for those, for stormwater when it, when it occurs on site. Generally, on the, in the project, the panels and racking run north to south, and these panels will be tracking, so they'll be following the sun east to west and, and tracking the sun every day. As was mentioned, we are including buffering as, which is what is in line with the county ordinance, but in addition, from, from the conversations that we've held with community members, the Viewshed issue on the front end of the project was brought up to us, and we wanted to make sure that, that those issues were addressed. It's not a requirement in the county ordinance, but we wanted to hear those concerns and address them. So we plan on planting a vegetative buffering on the front end of the project as well to cut down on the visibility from the front Highway 269. As Doug mentioned, this is a 3.25 megawatt project located off Highway 269, and we're interconnecting with Middle Tennessee Electric, who we're working closely with on this project. Something that's come up as well is decommissioning. So being the owner-operator of the project for the long term, that means that we own the land, we own the property, that means we also have to decommission the project at the end of its life. So Silicon Ranch will be responsible for the removal of the project components in restoring the soil and the land to where it previously was, pre-project. And that includes panel recycling and reuse where possible. So Silicon Ranch is committed to recycling panels, as is in line with, with the, the first solar company that we partnered with. They have, they have panel recycling programs that we have access to at the end of life. And. and we're also working with other companies that, this is a kind of a growing field, as it is a newer, a newer, a newer field. We're working with other companies as well to meet those recycling needs, where at the end of life, we can bring panels to them, and they can recycle and reuse panels as much as possible. So that's something that we take very seriously. As I mentioned, it all kind of boils down to being the owner-operator of the project. We want to make sure that we leave the, leave the land in as good of a shape as we found it. So that's just some quick overview of the company and the project. I appreciate your time. Be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else desiring to speak for or against the issue? Please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I clear the public hearing closed, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Commissioner Buchanan, you're recognized.
Yes, Chairman. We, we did go visit several, I mean, we went to the Alabama site, and from what I seen, and Commissioner Allen, and Commissioner P., Doug, and...
Mike.
It might go, might, might have been go, did. Yeah, yeah, it was four of us. From what we seen, it was sitting in the middle of a neighborhood, and they had great buffering around it. And I do understand the concerns. I got two calls on it that were against it, and I've got several others that were for it. So I'm going to make a motion to approve it with all necessary, any necessary corrections from the Planning Commission.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote. Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Gammon, need to stand up so I can see you, that you have a question.
I don't have a question.
Somebody got any cheaters? There you go.
I just have a question.
Mr. Demasi?
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to answer that question. The reason we didn't require a traffic study is because of the amount of traffic, like, that would be generated by a development such as a residential subdivision or something like that. There's a lot of trips that come in and out. The only trips are going to be coming in and out of here after the construction is done is just going to be routine maintenance, maybe once or twice a week. There's just not going to be enough traffic in there to really warrant any kind of improvements.
I was just wondering, how is that determined? Who, that it's just not enough traffic?
Well, in our, right, in our zoning ordinance...
I'm not going against it or anything.
Right, no, I understand. No, in our zoning ordinance, there's criteria as to what should require a traffic study and what shouldn't. This didn't really rise to that level.
Other questions? We have a motion, we have a second. Seeing none, we'll be on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
16 yes, 3 no.
Motion passes. Demasi, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our third application for consideration tonight is by Nick Di Bartolo for the Rogers Group. This is located along Burton Ob Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is planned unit development for an expanded rock quarry. Size of the site, total site would be 562 acres. Materials submitted, yes, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I was on the wrong one. Materials submitted by the applicant state they desire to expand the area of their quarry, not for more production per year, but for the long-term progression to better serve the county's rock and gravel needs for the next 50 years. Their current site is approximately 305 acres. The expanded area, again, would be about 562. They are proposing to add also a concrete plant and an asphalt plant in the future, and they'll explain this a little more. They have several representatives here tonight to go through their application as well. The existing quarry has been in operation since 1985. Rogers Group purchased the property back in, or the business, excuse me, in 2000, has been operating it since that time. The Planning Commission did consider an expansion request back in 2007, but a decision was never reached, and the application was abandoned several years ago. Rogers Group has since purchased several properties surrounding the quarry over the last 15 years and feels that now is a good time to make this expansion request. I'll call your attention again to the pattern book. There is a concept plan in there as how they want to expand over the next 50 years. Shows a phasing plan. Since this is a planned development, the applicant can craft the request to fit their needs. We instructed the applicant to use the regulations in our zoning ordinance that deal with mining, quarrying, to specify which provisions they were varying from. Pages 29 through 31 of the pattern book do outline those differences. The main difference is from the requirements from adjacent properties or rights of way, specifically residentially-zoned property. Required setback in our ordinance is 1,500 feet. They are proposing 400, which would not be until later in the life of the project. Their pattern book states currently they're about 1,700 feet away from the western property line. Consistent with our zoning regulations, they did hold a neighborhood meeting prior to their application. This was held at St. Elizabeth's Orthodox Christian Church on June 2 of this year. Much of the information of the pattern book is included on your agenda packets, as well as the presentation that they'll make here in just a few moments. This development will continue to have access onto Burton Ob Road. Information provided in their pattern book states that 90% of their truck trips leaving the quarry head east toward Veterans Boulevard and I-840. Page 16 of the pattern book outlines proposed improvements to Burton Ob Road at the entrance to the quarry, which include an eastbound left-turn lane and a westbound deceleration lane. Full designs will be completed on these improvements should this application be approved. Again, they would have to submit for an engineered site plan approval. Quaries are typically required to provide type III buffers adjacent to residentially-zoned property, as they are a very intensive type land use. This is our thickest buffer, being between 1, 2, and 3. Among those three, this is the thickest. This has an average width of 50 feet, which can be reduced to 25 feet, again, if they used a privacy fence, berm, et cetera. Plantings are also required. Non-residential PUDs are not required to provide open space, but their pattern book states they do plan to provide a 100-foot preservation easement along with a 200-foot natural area, and also 100-foot wide berm between the quarry mining area, the wall, and the property line for a total of 400 feet. These undisturbed areas also contain multiple trees currently, and those can be counted toward their buffering requirements, and this exceeds what would be called for in our zoning ordinance. And again, those would be confirmed should this application be approved through a site plan. The applicant team discussed various aspects of this project during the Planning Commission's meeting last month, including blasting, vibrations, dust, et cetera. I'm sure they'll go over several of those tonight. A few people did speak who live in the area about potential health concerns, vibrations from blasting, additional traffic, environmental concerns. Others spoke about the work Rogers Group does in the community. Concerns were raised by the Planning Commission regarding the proposed asphalt and concrete plants, just the, there wasn't a lot of information in the pattern book. Other commissioners stated they were comfortable with what was being proposed. I've spoke to the applicants representative since that time. They're not thinking anything large-scale, just what you would typically see for something like that, though hopefully we'll address that as the meeting progresses. But after this discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. There was eight for, one was opposed, and there was one who abstained. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi from the Commissioners? Seeing none, I call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request. Yes, sir. You're recognized, isn't well?
Yes, my name is Benny Pandorf. I'm with Roundtree and Associates. My partner Clyde Roundtree and I represent the Rogers Group for this rezoning, and we do have a presentation to show you. So it is a rezoning to plan utility development, plan unit development. So we're here tonight to receive any questions from the Commission. We thank you for your time, appreciate your service, and thanks for the audience being here as well. So the first thing is this is not a new location. It's, as Doug stated, it's a, it's an existing facility, and they're just enlarging it to the west on land that they have purchased over the years to really serve the Rutherford County community for the next 40 to 50 years. As Doug stated, we did have a neighborhood meeting back in June. We heard questions. We've been responding to those questions, the public. We've been engaged commissioners and asked questions and have responded to those questions as well. It's part of what our presentation are, some answers to those questions. The, all the questions have been heard, and we're trying to answer them as much as possible. Commissioner Gurley has been positive and says he supports the quarry. We believe that the best location for a quarry is an existing quarry and not a new one. So again, it's already existing. They're simply enlarging the pit to the west for safety for the workers, because the wider it is, the deeper they can go. A less wide pit is less safe to dig, and one of the members will explain that later. So we've been trying to inform and educate the community as we go. So as I said, I'm Benny Pandorf. I'm just doing an intro to rezoning a little bit, and I'm going to be talking about just the area trends down Burton Ob Road. Then... Not sure what happened. I didn't even touch it, and it moved. Okay, there it goes. Okay. Then after me, Derek Roberts will come up from Rogers Group and talk about the history of Rogers Group and about the Rutherford Quarry particularly. Wyatt Currie will come up. He's a geologist. He's going to talk about the particular plans for this location, the master plan and regulations. Then Brian Carr, Clyde Roundtree, Matt Pills, and Eric Knowles will talk about some key issues that have come up from the Commissioners and from the public. Nick Di Bartolo will talk about the economic impact and some awards and local community engagement that the Rogers Group has had. And then finally, we'll, Clyde Roundtree will come up again for questions at the end. So again, it's a rezoning to plan utility, plan unit development, sorry. And we're just here really tonight to answer your questions and concerns, as I said. So I get the best slide of all of them because it has a baby on it, and everybody loves babies. So the reason the baby's on it is because from the time that we're born to the time that we go to the grave, we as people require over, there's two facts in here that are important, over 3 million pounds of resources. Fuel, minerals, et cetera, these are for the buildings that we live in, the buildings that we occupy, the roads, our fuel that we utilize, the electrical conductors, et cetera, copper, all these things. But the interesting, the other interesting part of this slide is at the bottom, approximately half of those, that requirement is in rock, sand, and gravel, which is exactly what a quarry, a rock quarry provides. So just going down Burton Ob and Veterans, the primary uses are light industrial and commercial. There are residences in the area, but it's primarily not a heavy residential area. So again, it's an existing quarry, just wanting to be expanded for, to serve the county for years to come. So we're asking for your approval tonight. And with that, I'm going to have Derek Roberts come up to continue.
My name's Derek Roberts. I'm Division Vice President with the Rogers Group. And before we talk about the quarry, I want to give you just a brief history of the Rogers Group. We were, our business started in 1908 in Bloomington, Indiana. We've been in business coming up on 115 years now. We're still privately owned. We're headquartered here in Nashville, Tennessee. We operate 70 quarries, 40 asphalt plants, and 11 states. Tennessee is by far our biggest state in, excuse me, in presence, and we have nearly 30 active quarry sites here in Tennessee. For the last 75 years, the family, or for the first 75 years, the family owned and managed the business, and in the early 1980s, went with a different management structure and brought in a board of directors that was twofold, included family members but also included non-family members. So that was a big change for them. Also, at that time, they brought in an outside president and CEO, and we still run that way today and are managed that way. Talking a little bit about the quarry itself, current capacity is 2.2 million tons annually. We reached that level in 2019 and been pretty consistent since then. The largest year the quarry ever saw was back in 2007, 2008 range, where about 2.5 million tons. And then the economic downturn in 2009, 2010 hit, we saw a drastic decline and saw a steady incline since that time until 2019 and hit 2.2 million tons and been pretty steady since that time. Quarry serves approximately a 20-mile radius, serving the Rutherford County area. We operate typical week for us, we start at 6:00 in the morning, run to about 6:30 in the evening. We do have some maintenance services that come in after that time, do maintenance on the, on the plant, make sure we're ready to go the next morning. Currently, we have about 20 employees on site. With the expansion, with the asphalt plant, ready-mix plant, we will get up to about 30 employees on site. But a good thing about this is the truck traffic for the, for the county. Currently, we have to ship all materials from the quarry to the asphalt plant or ready-mix plant that are off-site. So bringing them on-site will reduce traffic for the county. Again, we've been in business for 108 and 8 years, or since 2008, coming up on 115 years. We've been successful because we've done what we say we're going to do over that timeframe, and we've also been heavily involved in the communities in which we operate, whether it be schools, charitable organizations, those type things, we were very heavily involved with. And as you'll hear later on in our presentation, you'll get to hear about some of those. So with that, I want to turn it over to Wyatt Currie and let him come up and talk about the site plan for the quarry.
My name is Wyatt Currie. I'm manager of mine planning and geology for the Rogers Group. I work on the quarry designs and help make sure that we're as safe and efficient as we can be in our design and make sure that we're abiding by all of the regulations that we need to work under, and that includes EMTSA for health and safety, EPA, as far as environmental goes, TDEC. So we're heavily regulated, and I'm part of making sure that we stay inside of all those rules. So as you can see behind me, we've got a site plan here. You'll see to the west of the quarry, the large green berm there. As Doug had already alluded to, we have the 100-foot undisturbed area, then the, then the berm. And one of the things that was brought up in the Planning Commission comments from the public was some concern about the knobs themselves. So we took that away and just validated with the topographic maps and the layout of the quarry. None of those knobs will actually be lowered, so the knobs will stay in place as they are, and they'll continue to serve as a visual buffer and a noise buffer. So there won't be any, any change. You'll continue to see the knobs as they are from the west side of the quarry. Another important fact about the, about the design here is the water recycling. That's a question that comes up a lot. The water, all the water in the quarry is directed into the quarries. So all the stormwater runs into the quarry, and then we actually utilize that water through the plant process and then continue to recycle that water to wash rock. So the water is contained and then recycled within the quarry. And if, if we have to do any water discharge, then we go through TDEC permits for that, and Eric will talk about that in a little bit more detail in his portion. and Eric will talk about that in a little bit more detail in his portion. It's already been brought up. It's the same tons per year. We're not expanding the amount of tons. This is just to get more space so that we can have enough material to make sure that we have, like I said, safe and efficient mining. This is a solution that will be 50-plus years of continuing to provide good aggregates, quality aggregates to the community at an affordable price. I can move up to the next one? So it's just a general schematic there of a typical asphalt plant. The quick, important thing to cover here is a traffic study that we've done with bringing this asphalt and concrete plant on site. It's about a 17 truck per day increase at this local site, but it'll be a significant decrease in overall truck traffic throughout the county because instead of sending dump trucks from the quarry out on the road to deliver those materials to the concrete plants and asphalt plants, those trucks will no longer leave the site. They'll go directly from the quarry to the concrete and asphalt plants. So the only trucks that leaves the site will be leaving with finished products. So it's a small local increase of traffic directly at the quarry of 17 trucks per day. But again, throughout the county, it's a significant decrease in heavy trucks on the county roads. Also have a schematic of the concrete plant there. The point here, they're about 60 to 70 feet tall. They take a half acre or so. Neither of the concrete or the asphalt plant would be visible from Burtonob Road or from 840 just because of the location where they'll be on site and the way the tree line is and the way the topography works. So these will not be visible. And with that, I will turn it over to Brian to take it from here.
As you're coming forward, I've had some requests by text by some of our members. Could we please, we do have a long agenda tonight, so if we could kind of speed this up.
Okay. All right. My name's Brian Carr. I am the area manager for Rogers Group in this area, responsible for eight quarries. This one being the largest in my area and my office is here as well. I'm a resident of Rutherford County, grew up in Smyrna, graduated from Smyrna High School, been here my whole life except for a stand in the Army. Anyway, we get to talk about the issues. I'll be talking about dust control. Then Clyde Roundtree will come up and talk about traffic. I'll be back up, talk about property values and noise. And then we've got an expert from Vibrotech to talk, his name's Matt Pills, talk about blasting and vibration. And then Eric Knowles, our Director of Environmental at Rogers Group, will talk about the environmental issues. The first is dust control. And yep, it's up there. We have a fairly new plant. It has state-of-the-art, most up-to-date dust suppression system. That's made up of a series of high-pressure misting nozzles. They're located at every crusher in the plant and also throughout the plant at every transfer point. Also, we have, all the screen towers are enclosed, the roof in three sides, and this is also to help mitigate dust in the plant. The biggest concern I know from the neighborhood meeting is the dust on Burtonob Road. As you can see in the, let me go to the next slide. There we go. Whoop. All right. As you can see in the picture, we have a wheel wash. It's a high-pressure water nozzle that sprays the tires of every truck that leaves the site. Also, we've hired Sweeper Corp. to come out three times a week. They sweep Burtonob Road, Veterans Boulevard, all the way out to 840 and our entrance. And we have our own sweeper truck that we use daily on our own entrance and right in front of the entrance on Burtonob. As far as the water off the wheel wash, sometimes that does get out on Burtonob Road. We do our best to manage that. Part of the traffic, as we redo the road on Burtonob Road, we're going to redo our entrance and change the drainage there a little bit. We're going to add a pond and try to get all the water, as you can see the pond on the right side there, try to get all the water into that pond and off of Burtonob. And with that, I'll turn it over to Clyde to talk about the traffic.
Thank you, Brian. As mentioned, I'm Clyde Roundtree with Roundtree Associates, my partner Benny. We've been representing Rogers through the zoning opportunity, rezoning opportunity. But I just wanted briefly to talk about the traffic. That was a primary concern back in 2007 when Roger pulled their application. They were waiting for 840 to be completed. They're waiting for Veterans Park to be improved. And as a result, we feel like with those improvements made for circulation, this is the current solution. So what we're recommending is, as was stated, there'll be a deceleration lane coming as you're heading east or heading west on Burtonob Road. And as you're heading east on Burtonob Road, there'll be a left-hand turn lane. This will allow for fluid traffic for the existing community as well as taking the trucks out of the way. Right now, they have to basically come to a complete stop in order to get into the driveway. So we feel like that's a positive solution. Bill Huddleston from Huddleston Steel Engineering did our traffic study and recommended this solution. So we feel like it's a good long-term solution for Burtonob Road. Thanks.
As far as the property values go, there's a perception that the quarries will lower the property values. There's been many studies over the last four decades that prove otherwise. One of those studies was here in Rutherford County and included this actual quarry. The studies show that property values of homes within one mile radius of a quarry, they keep pace with property values throughout the rest of the county. The first thing people want to say when they hear of a quarry is not in my backyard. But when you pin people down and ask them specific questions, many would rather have a quarry than other developments like a Walmart or a high-rise apartment complex or a shopping center. The fact is, if you neighbor the quarry, when you look out your back window, you will see woods. We've talked about the buffer. There's trees and woods there now. That's staying. Beyond that will be the berm that will protect visibility and noise. And so you really won't see us. And I know we're in a hurry. Instead of talking about noise, and I'm just going to save that in case there are any questions later, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Nick. Thank you, commissioners. You all have seen the pattern book. Received a favorable recommendation at the Planning Commission. I appreciate you all's time. Message received. At this time, Clyde and I would like to be able to take any questions from you all, if you have any. We can go into some detail on some of the slides that we're skipping if you so choose. But out of respect for you all's time, we'll go ahead.
Mr. P. I too would like to make this quick. I've heard a lot of things thrown out there, but I hadn't heard, how much mineral severance tax have you all paid over the years?
Over the years, I don't have that number handy. It's 15 cents a ton on the roughly 2 to 2.2 million tons that comes out. Between all of the taxes we pay, severance, property and the like, it's $1.2 million annually. And so I guess I'd like to point out the most important thing here is, as one of the largest businesses in this area of the county, it does help to keep property taxes in check for folks as well. So, good question. Thank you.
Other questions? Saying none. Thank you. Is there anyone else speaking for or against this proposed request? Seeing no one come forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back in session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Girdon.
I have visited this site, talked to the various members of Rogers Group in detail about this site and what they propose to do. And I make a motion to approve this as submitted and approved by the Planning Commission. I would like to say before I relinquish my mic that in the eight years that I've been a commissioner, I've had one complaint and that was about dirt on the road. If you've gone through there, you know that there are several other projects. I'm not sure that you can attribute all the dirt on the road to Rogers Group, but they've been good community, citizens of this community, supporting several needs within the community and always been willing to help. So with that, I so move.
Second motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, members will be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
18 yes, 1 no.
Motion passes. Mr. Demasi, last one.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last public hearing for the night is by Dustin Estes. This is for SFG Murfreesboro SSL LLC, which is located along, property is located along Sulphur Springs Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is Plan Unit Development and this is for an industrial development. Size of the site is approximately 157 acres. Subject properties, and there's four of them, have been the subject of many discussions for possible rezoning over the last several years. Before this recent iteration that we're looking at tonight, the last application we received was a couple of years back in 2020 for a similar type of development, but the building was significantly larger, about 2.2 million square feet. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend denial of that request. I have attached minutes from the Planning Commission's December 14th meeting for your reference. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this property back on May 9th for the current application you're looking at. This application was deferred. They allowed the applicant opportunity to address traffic, drainage, other concerns that were raised during the hearing. Since that time, this applicant has met with staff, their development team's met with staff over several issues. The current pattern book that you have, and again, there's a copy of that pattern book on your iPads, shows two buildings on the site, largest of which is about 100, sorry, 1.1 million square feet and a smaller one about 260,000 square feet. No specific users have been identified, but the pattern book does state, and I quote this from the pattern book, "A local business that has a manufacturing business in Smyrna and a distribution building in Wilson County." There is a range of uses identified in the pattern book on page eight. Some uses have been specifically prohibited such as wrecker services, etc. Maximum building height would be 50 feet, which is normally 40 in the heavy, light industrial and 50 for heavy industrial. Floor area ratio is proposed to be .75, which is actually a little lower than what you see in our industrial zones. And the building setbacks are also greater than what you would typically see in our residential zones. They are showing 150 feet along Shacklet Road and the southwest boundary as well. Due to the changes in the proposed TVA easement, there is an easement that goes through these properties. It's not a line associated with it, but there is the easement. They had to shift the size a little bit of building to, which is currently being shown at about 223,000 square feet in your pattern book. The applicant did request a maximum size for this building of up to 373,600 square feet, which is larger than what they showed in their original plan. But they feel that they might be able to get a little more area if they're able to shift the building around a little bit, but that has not yet been determined. So we just told them to give us a range as to what they would think they would need for that. This project will have access to Sulphur Springs Road. The concept plan does show a 60-foot right-of-way that will terminate into a cul-de-sac onto the property. This would be a public road. The applicant plans to build to county standards and again, eventually acceptance as county road. The remaining access drives would all be private and they are not proposing any access points to either Shacklet Road or Walnut Lane. There was a large amount of folks that wanted, that did speak at our public hearing last month. Most of the concerns generally were about either traffic or drainage. I mean, there were others, but traffic and drainage were the predominant ones. Quite frankly, those have been the concerns that staff has had since the beginning when we started looking at this property. The applicant stated that they will be making improvements along Sulphur Springs Road to facilitate the traffic, especially tractor-trailer traffic to this property. I know that the applicant's present and they're going to be making a presentation as well to go over this. But one of the biggest concerns that we had had to do with the backup along I-840, especially from the interstate over to the three-way stop at Leanna and Sulphur Springs Road. After discussing these concerns with the development team, they have agreed to design and install a traffic signal at that three-way stop. We feel that the stop condition for eastbound traffic along Sulphur Springs Road is one of the primary causes for the backups, especially as traffic on the on-ramps or off-ramps, I should say, from 840 onto Sulphur Springs Road, you know, the traffic backs up so far along Sulphur Springs that people can't get out of the off-ramp to move east. So that's one of the major issues with the backups there. So the light would be programmed to allow eastbound and westbound traffic along Sulphur Springs Road, Leanna Road, to free flow until northbound traffic along Sulphur Springs Road wanted to make a left turn. Another traffic-related concern was the tractor-trailers turning left onto Sulphur Springs Road from the proposed development, heading toward Florence Road to the west. The applicant has redesigned the exit from the proposed development to place physical limitations, raise medians for tractor-trailer traffic, try to keep them from turning left. This new design, along with no left-turn signage and tractor-trailer should help reduce trips toward the west. The county highway superintendent has also placed a 25-ton weight limit on the Nicest Mill Bridge. The pattern book, and we discussed this a little earlier about the setbacks in general on this particular property, does show a 50-foot wide preservation easement and landscape buffer around the western portion of the site. Again, they are showing 150-foot setback buffer along the southwest corner of the property and also along Shacklet Road. There is an area to the northern end of the property, to the west of the access point onto Sulphur Springs that needs alternative screening. It's just too close and the property really necks down in that area. So they're proposing to construct a 12-foot, which was originally an eight-foot privacy fence, a wall, along that line to help with screening for that adjacent property to the west. Of course, if this application is approved, all of this is going to have to be submitted to the Planning Commission for review with an engineered site plan. Drainage being another major concern, I know the development team's going to discuss that and our county engineer is also present if you have questions. I'm not an engineer and don't pretend to be one, but the conversations we've had with the applicant, we feel comfortable with what they're proposing, at least from a conceptual level, understanding that there is going to be a lot more work involved should this application be approved, detailed construction drawings and that no permits or anything are going to be allowed or any grading to move forward until those issues have been addressed to staff's satisfaction. Again, I mentioned this earlier, there were several people who spoke during the public hearing on this request. Most of the concerns, again, regarded the drainage and the traffic and the effect on the development of the Leanna community. Some felt that additional studies needed to be performed on the underground drainage network, not just the above ground, before reaching a decision. The Planning Commission did have questions about staff's comfort with the drainage and traffic plans. I've discussed that already. And again, we said that while more detailed plans would have to be submitted for review, it appears the plans can address our concerns. So after all the discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 9, 4 and 1 against. Again, the applicant's team is present. I believe they have a presentation to make that could probably go into a little more detail. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Blair.
Just wanted, I made my concerns known at Public Works last week. I've had several conversations with Rob at SEC over the crowded conditions there backing up on 840. The plan that I've seen with the flow-through, I think will help the situation anyway, but my concern would be if, are there going to be sensors on that non-pass-through third leg of the three-way stop?
They'll have to be, and again, I'll preface this, but I'm not a traffic engineer. But they can put loops in the road, sensors, so if someone pulls up to that, the light will know, hey, there's someone waiting to turn left. It'll change, let the person go and then go back to free flow east and west directions. That technology is possible, yes.
Well, possible is one thing, but mandating it is another.
I mean, that's just part of the traffic management that will be done.
All right. Just wanted to be, I've been concerned about the traffic that has backed up.
Yes. Commissioner Allen.
Doug, on page seven of the pattern book is the best view of the layout of the buildings and of the traffic itself. Will you talk a little bit about Hickory Lane and how those families, and I know staff recommended against a traffic light there even though the applicant had offered to put one. Several families spoke with great concern about being trapped on Hickory Lane, not being able to turn left because of the truck traffic coming out and then because of the traffic improvements we're making on the other side. There was no good answer for how we were going to help move those people off of Hickory Lane. Would you talk about that for just a minute?
Well, yes, I will. I'm not sure if there was ever, and I'll let the applicant speak to that, if they were thinking about putting the traffic signal right there at that intersection now. And this is something I think that the applicant speak more to as far as the number of truck trips are going to come in and out. I don't think this is going to be a situation where it's going to be constant non-stop trucks coming in and out all day and that there's just no way that those people on Hickory Lane could ever get to the left. Would that warrant a traffic signal, you know, right now without further study? I would think probably not. But that's something that would have to be evaluated in time. But that's something that would have to be evaluated in time. But again, this isn't going to be where they're just lined up constantly trying to get in and out. There's going to be opportunities and breaks in traffic for them to get out. And I think there's—the number 16 sticks in my head as far as the number of lots back in that area. So I mean, the amount of traffic coming in and out of there compared to the rest of the road network isn't as substantial—not that that's not important, but it's not as substantial as the east-west movements coming out.
Other questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing none. I call the Rutherford County Commission Meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Our public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, if you would, please come forward. State your name, your address, and if you are for or against the proposed request. At the bell.
We've prepared 45 minutes, is that right?
I was just told by the clerk—
I'm kidding.
Three minutes.
I'm kidding. We'll be brief. We appreciate everyone's time here today. And we've had a chance—Stonemont—my name's Dustin Estes. I'm with Stonemont Financial Group, Stonemont Development. We're the developer and the group that's buying the land and that has worked to put this project together. We've had a chance to meet with a handful of the commissioners, and we appreciate all of your time and been able to kind of brief you on what we're trying to do and give you a preview here. And we'll go into detail and answer some questions. But again, try to respect your time here tonight. First and foremost, as we came into the project, we knew that there was a background of issues and some possible projects that had been denied due to the size or possibly due to the lack of due diligence. I met with the seller. I met with a lot of folks here in the county and wanted to know who the best team to put together for this project would be. And that's why we zeroed in on SEC and Rob Mulchen and his team and Mark Lee, the water engineer, who I believe knows more about this property and the water issue than probably anyone in the county. And what we did was try to get our arms around, what are the issues? We know there's a handful of community members who had some issues and who had concerns. And these are good folks who just are looking for answers and want to understand. And we wanted to address those concerns. And that's what we did. And me being a developer, we wanted to understand those before we started committing dollars or doing anything like that. And that's what we've done and—to a significant amount of work. The project itself—and for those who don't know, and I'm sorry, Stonemont Financial Group, we're commercial real estate, investment house, and full-service industrial developer based in Atlanta. And we do a lot of work here in the southeast. We have about 20 million square feet of industrial projects under construction around the country. Handful being here in the greater Nashville market. We are also landlords. We own a large facility in Smyrna that we— I'm sorry?
One minute.
One minute? That we lease out to a tenant. The project itself, as we move forward here— Was that serious or joke?
Oh, that's serious.
Oh, really? Oh, I'm sorry. The project itself sits on I-840. We sit west of the I-840. The—as Doug mentioned, there's two buildings there. We're 1.2 million feet and 222,000 square feet. What we wanted to do was make sure we addressed the traffic and the water concerns. If I need to—if I need to move off, I'll let you come up and address the water and traffic concerns. Will that work? Okay. Why don't—we do that?
Good evening, Commissioner Rob Mulchen, SEC. If we can move the slides forward, please. One more. There we go. As you can see here, this is the site plan that we were talking about tonight in regards to the property. We've got two buildings on the property. One is 1.1 million square feet. The other one is roughly 273 up to 373, depending on how we can get the property to work based on the relocation, the TVA easement, which we have an agreement. And that route that you see on there is what's on there today. As you can see at the back portion of the property, from the standpoint of our stormwater management facility, we have designed two stormwater detention ponds to handle both sides of the property in regards to the drainage for the property. Those ponds were designed by Mark Lee in my office on that side. They currently, as they have been designed so far, actually equate to handling five times greater the stormwater runoff that would be coming from our impervious surfaces on the property. So that was one of the concerns of the community, but also one of the concerns of Mike Hughes in regards to the amount of stormwater that this would facilitate, but also because of the flooding situations that we have here in the community—in this portion of the community on that side. So we have set aside in regards to development for Stonemont's layout an enormous amount of property that is dedicated for stormwater management so that we can more than adequately handle the stormwater when it happens and that makes certain we don't cause any adverse effects to the community when there is a heavy rain event in regards to any flooding within the area on that side. So we can hold that water back and not allow it to cause an impact on that side. Another side of things, we want to move forward a little bit in the next slide. We did a traffic impact study. You can see the five locations. We were studying—it was asked by Mike Hughes to do this. So those are the areas that we studied. Next slide, please. We're making a number of improvements to Sulphur Springs. Namely, this right here, we're incorporating and are adding an additional from 100 feet of storage to 200 feet of storage for our trucks to move on the interstate. We've also incorporated a new three-lane on Sulphur Springs to allow for our truck traffic to be dedicated to turn lane in. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. And as Doug talked about, we've done an extensive amount of work on this development at the entrance in regards to providing for keeping the trucks from making a left-hand turn to head west on Sulphur Springs. That's been one of the major concerns, not only by staff, but also by the community at large. So we've designed this entrance to incorporate a number of safety factors and also deterrents from the standpoint of tractor-trailers. The actual lane itself comes up, and it automatically puts you in the right-hand lane to automatically go back to the interchange. So what we've done is we've raised concrete medians here and also narrowed this necking down so that it allows—it lessens the chance of a tractor-trailer making a left-hand turn to go down Sulphur Springs. It incorporated a number of bollards— concrete bollards, as well as an extra turn to keep trucks from making the left-hand turn. So that was part of that side of that. So I think that's pretty much all I got in regards to the two major concerns on that side. And I appreciate your time, and we're open for any questions you may have from the development team at this time, if you'd like. Thank you.
Seeing no questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Anyone else desiring to speak for or against this issue? Please come forward. About three minutes. Yes, sir. Please state your name, your address.
Gibson. I live at 2602 Walnut Lane, which our property connects to the proposed project here. I have two issues. In 1963 December, I turned 17. In 1964, I joined the United States Marine Corps. In 1965, I got orders to Southeast Asia, or more commonly known as Vietnam. In Vietnam, they split us with Agent Orange. 56,000-plus people died. What they don't tell you is 300,000-plus people died from Agent Orange. There is no cancer in my family, but they tell me I have cancer. In 2014, I was diagnosed with cancer. They tell me I still have cancer. Now, all I can go is on what they tell me. But if I have cancer, it's from Agent Orange. That's what they tell me. I've been Googling fumes from diesel smoke. This property is right next to me. Diesel smoke is known to cause cancer, heart disease, contribute to heart disease, kidney disease, and even kidney failure. What I want to know is can Stonemont guarantee me that I'm not going to die an early death because of this? And number two, I just recently got a notice in the mail my property was reevaluated, about $90,000 more than it was last year. And I don't know how many of you live in the Leanna area, but if this project goes in, my property value is not going to go up. It's going to go down. Now, this increase was put out, apparently, before this project was approved by the Planning Commission. But if it goes through and my property value goes down, that means I can't sell my property and move away from this for what it's worth. I can't even sell it right now for what they sent me an appraisal for. But my question is—to this commission right here—is the VA is—and the American government is paying million dollars—millions of dollars every month in restitution—this— Sir? One minute, okay. And restitution for those who have issues from Agent Orange. And my question is, what is Rutherford County going to have to pay when the people in this area start getting cancer, heart issues, and kidney issues from the diesel smoke? Are we going to be responsible for the deaths? So for the—to me, this is probably a death sentence. But that's up to this commission right here. Thank you. And thanks to the VA guy that came tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to speak for or against? Please come forward. State your name and address, and state if you're for or against the proposed request.
Yes, my name is Patricia Ramsey. I live at 4719 Hickory Lane, Murfreesboro, and I am against this project. We live in a community—a community of people that move there for peace and quiet. We have 450 people surrounding on all three sides that are against this project. All 16 families on Hickory Lane are against this project. Why? Traffic. And they can say what they want, but at any given time, it's hard to get out on Sulphur Springs Road. Second, the noise. Third, the lights. 24/7. It won't stop. I was told that the vehicles going into this place will be, especially the trucks, every six and a half minutes. Well, that's a lot of trucks. That's a lot of traffic going in right there, right across from Hickory Lane, every six and a half minutes. We have school buses. I'm a crossing guard. I know we've had three accidents at schools by buses already this year. The school bus parks right outside Hickory Lane to pick up children. Now, you're going to have trucks going in here. You're going to have people coming this way. I don't care whether there's three lanes or six lanes. If there's not someone out there to help, they won't stop. That's a big concern because we have new families in there. Anyway, I appreciate what Stonemont has tried to do. They have gone over and above trying to communicate. But it's still a big business. And it's still—it will ruin our community. Our quality of life will be diminished by this project. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please come forward. State your name and address, if you're for or against the proposed request.
Good afternoon. Name is Randy Freeman. My address is 3005 Two Deer Trail, and I'm against this project. It's a behemoth of a building going in. It is a community. It's one of the few left in Rutherford County, which I know you know. We are struggling because of the traffic already. I understand time studies. I understand traffic studies. I understand all that. I'm very astute in a lot of things that most people don't even realize. But you don't live there unless you live there. And it is going to destroy our community. The truck traffic, the noise, the lights, The truck traffic, the noise, the lights, and the potential to increase the flooding will wipe us out. If you can bear that, may God bless you. That's all I have to say. I'm opposed.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
My name is Ryan Lamb. I live at 4116 Evans Street, and I am against this. The applicant's proposal for an industrial park centers around a warehouse that would bring a conservative estimate of 250 trucks running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's 250 75-foot trucks. Three and a half miles worth of trucks a day would share a two-lane highway with residents trying to return home or go to work. That's one truck, as my neighbor said, every six and a half minutes. The applicant's concessions is to... The community is to place ballers in a raised corner to maintain or that main entrance to discourage truckers from turning northbound onto Sulfur Springs. Nothing presented has addressed the access point property of Shacklet. He said that there was going to be a private, but nothing is going to deter them if a trucker wants to turn onto Shacklet, to turning onto Shacklet. The second concession made to the Leanna community is that the applicant will come out of pocket to install a traffic light at the corner of Sulfur Springs and Leanna Road to alleviate the traffic coming from the 840 exit southbound toward Murfreesboro. This concession is akin to using a Band-Aid to treat a gunshot wound. Traffic will still back up when the light changes to allow commuters to turn northbound onto Sulfur Springs. Our community would be better served with a roundabout at that intersection than a red light. The applicant's traffic expert stated that the county's 20-year plan was to widen the entirety of Sulfur Springs to a five-lane highway. I will admit, if Sulfur Springs were already a five-lane highway, traffic may be a moot point. However, it is not a five-lane highway, and 20 years will be too long to wait if an industrial complex is placed in our residential neighborhood. The applicant is not going to wait for the roads to widen to bear the extra burden of their warehouse trucks. 16 homes on Hickory Lane directly across from the main entrance will immediately feel the effect of this industrial complex. The residents will have to compete with the trucks to gain entrance onto Sulfur Springs Road. Buses stop at these homes to pick up and return schoolchildren. Many other residents, including my neighborhood, will compete with these trucks just to get home. I ask you commissioners to imagine 250 75-foot trucks a day coming in and going out of your neighborhood. Would you want that kind of traffic for you? Your neighbors... Now add the water problem. My neighbors are more knowledgeable in this water problem, but after seven years of living at my house, it has flooded four of those years to the point that the water has flooded over Sulfur Springs. My neighbors on the lower end of Walnut have been cut off while we wait for the waters to recede. I ask you, I implore you, leave Leanna alone. Don't rezone.
Please state your name and address, and if you're for or against the proposed project.
My name is Andrew Muffett. I'm opposed to this project. I live at 2939 Cannon Hill Drive in Murfreesboro, the Miles Farm subdivision, across from the proposed project. A study titled "Storing Harm: The Health and Community Impacts of Goods Management, Warehousing, and Logistics" published by the Trade, Health, and Environment Impact Project in January 2012 found that communities near warehouses and distribution centers had the highest levels of particulate pollution in the nation. Specifically, the study looked at Walmart, Target, Ross Stores, Mattel, Pier One, and Home Depot distribution centers, ranging from half a million square feet to 3.4 million square feet near residential areas in Illinois, Virginia, California, South Carolina, and Georgia. In Miraloma, California, research showed that children in that particular community had the slowest lung growth and weakest lung capacity of all children studied in the greater region. As a father of four children myself, this could be a scary new reality. The trucks that carry freight to be warehoused and trucks idling engines at or near the warehouse sites pollute by emitting small toxic particulates called particulate matter, or PM, into the air. These particles are of varying size and toxicity, from PM-10, which is dust and sizzles of 10 microns or less in size that can irritate the throat and lungs; PM-2.5, which is particles of 2.5 microns or less in size that are considered dangerous; and ultrafine particles less than .01 microns in size from fuel combustion, especially trucks and motor vehicles. Particulate emissions from diesel vehicles and equipment contributes to health problems that include cardiovascular problems, cancer, asthma, decreased lung function and capacity, reproductive health problems, and premature death. I understand that this parcel of land will be developed, but rezoning it to light industrial and allowing this project to proceed will cause harms to the residents of Leanna beyond the issues that have already been well documented, including the exacerbating the already precarious flooding and sinkhole issues, traffic, and noise. I'm going to call this rezoning request out for what it is. It is inappropriate spot zoning, and approving it would be negligence on the part of this commission. I respectfully ask you to please do the right thing for the residents of Leanna and deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
If you would, as you come forward, please state your name, address, and if you're for or against the project.
My name is Marv Whittenburg. I live at 629 Sulfur Springs, or 1547 Sulfur Springs Road, and I am against the project. I've been at every meeting except the last one that was held. Mr. DeMossi has been at every meeting that we were at, and I just stood here, or I stood over there part of the time and sat there part of the time, and I heard him up here reading everything that he's put out for you all right here. And I heard him question his own information time and time again about, we don't know if this is going to be... This is going to work exactly right or not? We don't know if they're going to leave the building right here, but this is a PUD. If you're going to put a PUD, you're supposed to know where you put in that building, and you're supposed to be allowed to put it there only. Isn't that right? Okay. My thing about this is, is how did it even get this far? You've had so many people against this. This commission is elected by the people of the county, and you've heard so many people at every one of these hearings that was all against it. How many people did you have for it? About three. And you know what? Most of them don't even live in the county. No, they're the developer, okay? They come in here and want to do this. I'm telling you, this is the wrong thing. You've met with the developer on your own without asking any of us to be there, so he can work out the things that you want to hear, so you can go ahead and recommend it to this commission. That's not right. You don't do that. You're supposed to represent the county and these people as well as this commission. So I'm just telling you, I don't see how it got this far. It should have never gotten this far. People you know of the water issues, I understand what they're saying they're going to do. I fully understand that, and it is going to help that situation right there. I don't doubt that. This is the wrong thing at the wrong time in this community. It doesn't... The zoning does not need to be changed. We need this commission to stand up and say, hey, those people are right. It doesn't need to be there. It doesn't need to be there.
If you would, state your name and address, take a deep breath, state if you're for or against the proposal.
My name is Susan Grant. I live at 2934 Two Deer Trail. Please forgive the nerves. I am completely against this. That gentleman stood up here one time and said that his job was to find a piece of dirt and develop it. Well, that piece of dirt is our home and is our community. I am against it for traffic. I'm against it for flooding underwater and above the streams. When you move them, they're going to go and they're going to flood our home. Please don't let them flood our home. Please don't let them add to more traffic that we already have, and please do not let my neighborhood be a mile or just shy of a mile of a building. Thank you. I am against this.
Please state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
My name is Ally Rogers, and I am adamantly opposed to this proposition. I want to appeal to your humanity for a moment. My husband and I moved into our home just six months ago. Could have never foreseen that this would be an issue that we took on, but I would not change where we live for the world. In fact, the reason I'm speaking today is because of lovely Pat Ramsey, and we have come to find a family within our neighborhood. Not only that, but seeing the wildlife that thrives and flourishes around us. There's Mama Deer and her baby Fawn. There are horse farms and cow farms, and I think that while this might be an opportunity to create security for someone else, it threatens the security of our homes, and it's not right. I echo all of the voices of everyone who spoke before me because this is morally wrong, and it's imposing on our quality of life. Thank you.
Please state your name, address, if you're for or against the proposed request.
James Shute, Jr. I live at 2927 Cannon Hill Drive, and I oppose. I'm against the industrial complex in our neighborhood. I moved out of Davison County 12 years ago into Murfreesboro in this particular area because it is still a rural area. Farms are around it from where I grew up. My parents originally had family in Walter Hill, so we moved out here back to a farm area. With you putting an industrial complex in a residential area with trucks 24/7, it's going to be a light problem. It's going to be trucks in and out. Trucks are going to be coming from the opposite direction on Sulfur Springs to get into the complex. They can say everything they want about traffic getting in, and they're three lanes. When you only have about 200 feet of road coming off of the interstate to get into their complex, it's going to be a traffic nightmare. Red lights at the three-way stop are going to make traffic even worse in our community. Putting the industrial complex in our community is just going to be a bad idea. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
Good evening. My name is Max Johnson, and I was tasked with the community outreach for this project. I'm here representing six community members that couldn't make it here tonight but wanted to send in their support. Just going to read off six letters that were also submitted in your packet, so you should have them in case I don't get through them in time. Dear Planning Commissioners, I'm Brian to express my support for the Sulfur Springs Business Park. I heard that it was a business already in Rutherford County that wants to expand, and I fully support keeping our jobs and tax revenue here. I think development is coming this way regardless, and we should support businesses that are already here. My husband is a truck driver, so I support the supply chain industry, especially with all the supply chain issues we have in our country right now. The more distribution centers we have, the better things will get. Please support Rutherford County businesses and the supply chain industry by approving the Sulfur Springs Business Park. Sincerely, Lori James, Joe Brown Road. To whom it may concern, my name is James Lewis. I'm a supporter of the Sulfur Springs Business Park. Having developments like this going off Sulfur Springs Road help our property values. After talking with Stonemont's representatives and learning more about the project, I'm confident that the proposed plan will work well with our neighborhood and help our property values increase. Support the residents of Leanna by approving the Sulfur Springs Business Park. Sincerely, James Lewis.
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you give the addresses where those people live?
Yes. So this is 3015 Miles Drive. Planning Commissioners, I want to send in my support for the Sulfur Springs Business Park off 840 in Leanna. This development is going to help our community out more than any other proposed plan for the plot of land. I have heard that there have been other proposed plans such as housing, and that is not something we need. We need more business growth in this area, and this is a perfect place to put a project like this distribution center. I ask that you approve this proposal to further business development here in Rutherford County. Sincerely, Chris Forstel, Sulfur Springs Road. Rutherford Planning County Commissioners, please vote to approve the Sulfur Springs Business Park proposal for the distribution center between Sulfur Springs Road and Shacklet Road. This is a positive development in my eyes, and as this plot of land is undoubtedly going to be developed in the future, this proposal makes the most sense. I hear from folks in the community that it could potentially be developed for housing, and that would not be a good thing for this community. We already have a problem with flooding and traffic, and a housing development would only make things worse. I support the Sulfur Springs Business Center because they have actionable solutions to help with those two main issues we have in Leanna. Flooding from this project site would be stopped or slowed down by the two massive retention ponds on the property. Traffic is already a bad coming off of 840 onto Sulfur Springs, so adding minor traffic isn't going to make things worse. What will make things worse is having housing on this property and an unknown number of cars that would come off these houses. Thankfully, the distribution center will have shifts, so we don't have to worry about trucks coming in and out of the area throughout the day. With the housing development, it would be a lot worse. I hope you will vote to approve this business development as it is best proposal for this area. Sincerely, Robert Mooneyham, 118 Indian Camp Court. And then the rest of those are in your packets as well, so thank you so much.
If you would, please state your name, address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
My name is Kai Rogers. I live on 4730 Hickory Lane, and I am vehemently opposed to this project. My wife just spoke a moment ago, and when we first bought the house on Hickory Lane back in March, we were just overjoyed with, you know, the opportunity, getting to put our roots down here, and that joy quickly turned to ash in my mouth when I discovered the plans that they had in store for this area. I think that this is a plight on our community. I don't think it benefits anybody but this company out of Atlanta, and I think it's wrong and immoral to approve a project that does nothing to benefit the people who live here and only lines the coffers of those who live a state away. I'm a little passionate about this, and I'm very against public speaking personally. I'm just kind of a little timid, but I wanted to get up here and just voice my concerns and say, how would you guys feel if you had this in your own backyards, you know, trucks every six minutes? The number keeps going up. Is it 250 now in a day per shift for three full shifts? This commission is supposed to amplify the voices of the community, and we do not have the power to vote on this issue ourselves, so we must trust that you all will make these decisions for us and in the best interest of everyone who lives here. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name, address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
Kendall Barrett. I'm one of the five property owners, obviously, for this. What I'd like to do is if we could get the slide on the summary page. The main things that have been discussed have been traffic and flooding. A lot of the flooding that you're here, they're in the flood zone. It's been in the flood zone forever. Our property is not. In fact, FEMA is actually removing property. About 21 acres of our site is being removed from it. We will not be... Our water scientist has looked, and there is nothing that we can do to alleviate the flooding they're at, so our responsibility is just trying to make sure we don't put any additional runoff off our property. Right now, the ponds that we originally did are five times the normal design size. We've shown those are smaller than what's actually shown in the concept now, and we've also added additional capacity in other areas. Traffic, you've talked about, our current zoning is RS-15. Per the traffic study, if we were to do it, your daily traffic count for residential will be twice as much. Your PM count for the problem that's on the exit ramp for 840 and going through the three-way sign will be a five times traffic count at that time. The reason we're doing what we've looked at as owners, we've looked at the highest and best use. This allows us to do additional buffers. We have 150-foot buffer between the community. We're only accessing the community on Sulfur Springs Road so that we can go straight to 840. If this is residential zoning, we'll have access on the Shacklet, we'll potentially have access on the Walnut, and those will be a much bigger thing there. Again, any of these things we're discussing, water retention, traffic, it's going to be the same concerns whether it's residential or our PUD development. In our PUD development, we are allowed... We are able to do the water capacity, but we won't be able to do that same amount for residential, and we have that zoning. We will not have to add any additional lights or anything. If you look at the traffic impact study, the three-way stop in the exit ramp, if you look, our impact is not there. Those are county issues and state issues. Out of goodwill, Stonemont has agreed to put that light in there to try to help alleviate. If it's residential zoning, we'll have no responsibility for that, but I guarantee you it will affect it in a very negative way. As far as coming out on Hickory Lane, coming out of Hickory Lane with that truck, we've looked. Better flow moving will allow you to come out. I was the other day at Goodwill on Thompson Lane, one of the highest-traveled roads there. Busy time. I had to wait 45 seconds, wait for it to go, I'm out. A truck coming once every six minutes and allowing the other, if you look in the traffic impact study, it's going to be less than a minute for coming out of that road to be able to get out, and that's if you come out when a truck is there. Takes a truck about 30 seconds to turn, they'll come off the ramp, they'll go in. The route that we know that they'll be taking is because we know where they are headed for the large building. They will be utilizing 840, and they'll be utilizing the new four-lane on Jefferson Pike. Other highlights, the construction impact will be, if you do residential, we're going to be building and having stuff coming for three to five years. With this, they plan to have the tenant in in 18 months. Your revenue is at 40% for this instead of a 15%, 25% for the other. Also, your traffic for residential, they'll be going to school zones of Walter Hill, Segal Elementary, and those will not be going on if it's commercial, this PUDs.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Please state your name, address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Katrin, members of the commission. My name is Sean Henry, 511th Avenue North in Nashville. I represent Stonemont, and appreciate being here tonight with you. If you think about the current zoning on the property at three dwelling units per acre, it would allow hundreds of homes to be placed on that property and connecting to the adjacent residential neighborhoods by way of Shacklet Drive, Shacklet Road, and Walnut Lane, and that's not what the neighbors want. This rezoning with a PUD allows that... Those potential road connections to be absolutely eliminated, and one of the things that's part of this proposal is to abandon right-of-way that comes into this property now from Shacklet Road. So that would follow a final PUD approval and come before you at a later date. Also, residential development on this property would certainly increase the number of homes by hundreds. More utilities, more water lines, more sewer lines, more power lines to serve it, more traffic during the peak hour, absolutely. 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., you've got peak hour traffic, which is not out there now, and much less open space. So what's really important about this site plan is significant open space and setbacks of the buildings along the residential boundary, and we think that's really important and is sensitive to those residential properties. The planning commission approved this 9 to 1. That's because the planning commission is advising you based on the comprehensive plan that they're responsible for, and they found that this rezoning was better than the alternative, which would be a subdivision development as it's presently zoned. So we ask for your support. There's a commitment to make the improvements off-site. We supplied a letter to the planning commission on July 11, absolute commitment. As for Hickory Lane, my understanding from the traffic engineer is that the maximum delay there is 30 seconds for someone to pull out of Hickory Lane and make a left-hand turn, so we don't think that is a substantial impact. Thank you.
Please state your name, address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
My name's Carol Petticoe. I live at 2636 Walnut Lane. Our property backs up to this project, and unlike the gentleman a couple ago said, my property doesn't currently flood. I'm not... I'm in a flood zone, but it's only flooded the edges. It's not come to our house yet. But if this goes in, it will. And if you... Anyone, look at the video that's on the Sulfur Springs site against this, and just watch the video from the last big flood. It even surprised me. I've seen it, and the water was all the way up to the stop sign, but if you look in that video, it's nowhere near the river, and it is flooded, and there are signs that tell semis they're not allowed to go through there, and if you look at that video, you'll see one who tried to go through, and the gentleman had to be rescued. I've heard only a handful of people are against it. I don't know anyone until tonight who ever spoke for it. Everybody who lives around me is against it. We seriously considered selling our house when all these property values went up, but we valued our community. This project is making me wish we'd sold and moved out of the county because it feels like no one's listening to us, and everybody's like, oh, well, the red light they're going to put in, we'll take care of it. Well, if you're turning to the right, it'll take care of that. It's not going to take care of... Move to the left, and they say a truck every six and a half minutes? Yeah, they're talking about the trucks going in. What about the ones coming out? You know, they're going to have to come out once they go in. And that traffic, and already, you know, they say they'll put these blocks up. We already hear 840 all the time, and we have twice what they're proposing between us and 840 right now, and the light and noise, flooding, traffic is just going to make it where nobody's going to want to live here. Thank you.
Please state your name and your address, and if you're for or against the proposed
My name's Elizabeth Clark. I live at 3300 Shacklet Road with my husband, my daughter, five horses, and a whole bunch of rescue animals. Our property touches this property on two sides. My property is also in a flood zone, and I do carry flood insurance for that reason. Now, I know this property and its rezoning attempts have been numerous. We have been fighting this. We have been fighting this for years. Mr. Phillips, you stated the first time that Stonemont brought this in front of you, that the commissioners were getting kind of tired of dealing with this property. So one of my many fears is that the decision to go with these particular plans for this very complicated and geographically tricky piece of land is because nobody wants to deal with it anymore. I hope and I pray that is not the case. The people of Leanna have to live with this decision that this commission makes for as long as they live in Leanna, 24/7, seven days a week, because that is what the industrial park will be operating, 24 hours a day. We have to live with what you decide on this rezoning. And I have a feeling if this industrial park was budding right up next to your hot tub or your, where you keep your animals or where you sleep, you would have a real problem rezoning it. These are our homes. They're not your homes. These are just average, working-class people. They are the heart, and they are the core and the soul of Rutherford County, these people. They feel defeated. They do not trust that this commission is going to do what is in their best interests. We know it's great for Stonemont Financial. We know it's great for Kendall Barrett and the Wright Brothers and whoever else has got their hands in the kitty. Our own commissioner, Michael Rathers, he supports, he does, I mean, he stands with a tiny group of people and completely overrides the overwhelming negative against this property. How can we truly trust our safety and our interests in your hands? But let's just say that the Stonemont PUD is the best that you've seen. Is it really good enough? Their experts and your experts, Doug Demossi, Mike Hughes, they say, yeah, it's good enough. Okay. I hope so. I pray that they are right and that they know their stuff and that they can control Mother Nature when the floods come because they will come. When the blasting begins and the sinkholes start collapsing, when the homes in Leanna start seeing cracks in their foundations. But what's going to happen when Mother Nature doesn't want to cooperate? If you want to hear God laugh, tell him your plans. Sometimes things do not go as planned. Who's going to help the community of Leanna when the unthinkable happens? Who is going to be responsible?
Please state your name, your address, if you're for or against the proposed request.
I'm Mark Lee with Site Engineering Consultants. Good evening, commissioners and Mayor Ketchum. I analyzed this watershed that this site lays in. It starts somewhere around Regent Wood, and it all drains the sinkholes. There's no stream in this watershed that's about five square miles. I've drawn a very detailed watershed map, just looking to see what drains to it, and every bit of it goes to a sinkhole somewhere in the watershed, and it unfortunately comes out on Sulphur Springs Road when there is a heavy rain. And there's nothing we can do on this site to stop that from happening. There's nothing at Sulphur Springs Road you can do to stop that from happening. But what we plan to do is build very large, oversized detention ponds. Those ponds, I, one of them that I analyzed, I, when I started designing it, I had said, okay, I'll start with five feet deep and see what it comes up with. And I ran a hundred-year storm through it. It didn't even get two feet deep, but it reduced the peak rate of runoff from 96 cubic feet per second for the hundred-year down to 19 cubic feet per second for the hundred-year. So we can detain that even longer, make the runoff, the peak runoff even much less, and it will improve, well, the flow from this property. It's not going to solve the downstream problem, but there, I mean, unfortunately, they do have a problem on Sulphur Springs Road that Mother Nature created, and it can't be solved. But our goal is to not contribute to that. And my thought is that we can detain the runoff even longer to even produce less peak runoff, reduce that, those peaks, and not contribute any to the problem that they have and prolong the time that we release the runoff. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? If you would, please state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
Mayor Ketchum, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Steve Wright. I represent the family, the four of the five members that owns the property. We, again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We, I grew up in Bedford County. One of, this is such a beautiful place. Thank you for fixing it up, sir. My earliest memory of this square is coming with my granddad to buy shoes here on the square back when there were stores instead of restaurants here. But, but anyway, our family acquired this property some over 30 years ago while we were constructing 840, a section of it down near the 24 interchange. And for the last, we've worked with three different groups trying to figure out what is the best in-use for this property. As you can see, I'm aging out. We've got to figure out what to do with it. And the first two just were not a good fit for the property or for us or for our conscience. One guy trying to figure out how many hundred homes could be actually put on this piece of property. Got something to do with dirt, don't exactly how much soils there are and stuff like that, but it was approaching 300, I think, is what he believed was available. We didn't think that was a good fit. The next developer wasn't a good fit for us, and we believe now that we have the absolute best developer possible. They work locally, they know the system, they're in the area, they're good people. They have the community's best interest to the extent possible in, at their heart. And, you know, we've worked, they've worked with the staff to resolve every scientific problem. We can't solve the emotional issues, but we have worked to solve every scientific problem possible, and we would, even to the extent of adding traffic lights way away from the project. So we thank you for this opportunity. We humbly, prayerfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Please state your name and your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
Tom Natress. I live at 4824 Hickory Lane. I'm 100% against this. I don't see any value to anybody that lives in this area other than the people trying to put it in. We've got school buses that pick up at Hickory Lane and Sulphur Springs. You know, we've got all the truck problems that everybody wants to talk about. It's not going to be any benefit to anybody except those that are wanting to put this in. You know, 100%. Hope you don't vote for it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak for or against this issue? Anyone else? Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Commissioner Rather?
I guess I'm the guy, right? I moved out to Leanna almost 45 years ago. I was 13. And from, from being a young teenager, I never saw Allen Road flood till I was later on, about 17. Allen Road actually flooded. I pulled a guy out, had to swim underwater to log chain to him to get his truck out. Shacklet and Sulphur Springs. I've actually, people talk about the water being up to the stop sign. I've seen it's a high you couldn't see the sign, and it's been that way. It doesn't do it every time it rains, but there are times where the water floods, and it's been that way ever since I've been out there. So I said this in the Planning Commission that there's a flooding issue in Leanna, and only God himself can fix it. Nobody can fix it, and it's been that way. We have a road down past Dollar General that's called Swamp Leanna Road. Guess what? It flooded. So my understanding and my belief, listening to engineers, I've met with Doug and Mike personally in their office and went through this whole thing, they have, and I've been dealing with this since I got elected. I've been to countless meetings at SEC. I've been to countless neighborhood meetings. I think the very first one I put together on Shacklet Road at the Clark residence in her front yard. I wasn't for 840, but 840 came in. I'm not for this, but something is coming there. Reality is reality. Something, if we deny this, we're going to be right back listening to the same complaints about traffic and water. My understanding is this development has enlarged those two ponds to a degree far beyond what we would probably require. Correct, Doug? So it will not contribute to the flooding. It's been happening for decades or longer than that, but it won't contribute. I've dealt with this. I've, I've listened, I've talked, and I've been against every plan. Kendall Barrett can tell you, he and I have had some very frank and candid conversations. Rob will tell you, I've been to, I don't know how many meetings at SEC. So with this plan, and there's still a lot of work to be done as far as engineering site plans and everything else, so it's not like they're going to break around tomorrow. With this, with that being said, and the reality of you're at 840 in Sulphur Springs, go right up the street or 840 to Jefferson Pike, and John Phillips Farm, right next to his big farm is McCormick Trucking. On the other side of 840 is Smarter Ready Mix's corporate headquarters. Who would ever thought on Jefferson Pike? With all the farms and the cows and the horses and the deer and the turkey, we've got a truck company out. It's coming to Sulphur Springs in 840. Everything I've listened to, everything I've looked at, this is the best option. We'll put not, it won't bring, you know, you put houses in, how many of those kids are going to have to, they're either moving here and we've got to build another school or they're coming from another school and redistricting and all that mess. And the traffic's going to be horrible if that's a residential development, just horrible. So with everything I've said, with all you've listened to, I make the motion to approve this.
I have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion, any questions? Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. As a member of Planning Commission, I was the one vote against this. When we look at land from a Planning Commission standpoint, we have no greater responsibility than traffic and flooding, traffic and drainage. I completely agree, this applicant has really bent over backwards to try to accommodate our concerns and this parcel of land as much as possible. My concern is, I feel like we are bartering a little bit. We're trading him the safety and security of developing this site for a benefit off-site that's not his to fix, it's ours to fix. And so I don't want to, that doesn't sit well with me. The other concern that I have is, in the meeting, when, and if Mike's here, he can talk about it, but one of the statements that Mike Hughes made when we were describing the water issue was, this doesn't flood because of rain. It floods from underground. It floods from the water coming up. He described in this area, there literally being an underground river. In all the years that I've been on Planning Commission, I've never heard that phrase. That phrase startled me significantly to the point where I asked, would it be appropriate to have a hydrologist come and evaluate this? Is this one of those times? Because we have to get it right. The big concern here is, if we get it wrong, man, did we get it wrong? So I just want to make sure that we are being as fair and equitable to everyone as we can, make sure we've really evaluated, and we're not selling these people out for a benefit for a three-way stop that's not their fault. And then I just want to make one other note, and that is, in Doug's defense, I felt like he was attacked a little bit in terms of meeting with developers. That's his job. We employ Doug to meet with applicants and to sit and counsel with them, screen applications, get them to refine them in such a way that they accommodate all of our, all of our regulations so that we have good quality applications to examine. So I appreciate you, Doug, and the work that you do in that area. So I'll be voting against it. Those are my reasons, and I just wanted to share that with you.
Key?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Let me echo her sentiment about Doug and Mike. You guys are underappreciated. I've sat in their office numerous times and having them explain things to me, and they'll welcome you at any time in their office. They talk over my head, but by the time I leave, I understand things. And Commissioner Rather, that's, you're in a tough position. I've been in that position in my district, looking for the best fit for what you have at that time. Some of the language that you use, Commissioner Allen, really concerns me too. And Mr. Whittenburg and members of the community, we hear you. Let me explain kind of from my perspective, the way, I mean, I don't know a lot about this project because a lot of us are on different committees. And by the time we get our information together and read the minutes, and we have a lot to do on our own committees, but then when we get back together, we trust our committees, and then we get back together as a commission, we try to get all the information that we can. So we hear you, and it concerns me. It very much concerns me. Some of the language that Commissioner Allen uses, let me read this to you from the minutes. It was a conversation between Commissioner Cushion, Mike Hughes, the engineer. On the scale of 1 to 10, how big an impact would this have on the underground karst or geology network and the water in the whole area, slim or heavy? Mike Hughes said it's heavy. And listen to this, you could, you could be very delicate and still disrupt water flow underground. We know a general direction that it's going, but it doesn't go in a straight line and show up on the screen. And then he goes to say, it looks rosy and pretty on paper, but it's going to be a very challenging site to develop. That concerns me, and that's the first time I read that. But, but I hear the concerns here, so I'm going to have to mirror Commissioner Allen's and vote against it.
Other discussion? Anybody else? I have a motion and a second. Members will be on the board.
Some clarification, a yes vote is to deny.
A yes vote is to deny. A yes vote is for approval. Yes vote is for approval. Madam Clerk, record vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or if anyone would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record vote.
11 yes, 8 no.
Done? Mr. Demossi?
For what it's worth, the Planning Commissioners took five hours, so still a long meeting. I just wanted to say, for those outgoing commissioners and Mayor Ketchum as well, it's been an honor serving with you. Look forward to serving with the new commissioners coming in as well, and for those who will continue to serve. Thank you. Good night. Good night.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you very much, members. That takes us to item, back to item I, public comments. There were none, but I want to take a point. Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a break, please? Five minutes or some?
Yes, sir. We'll take a five-minute break. Please return properly in five minutes. Okay, members, I'm going to take you back to on the agenda. We're going to come back to the public comments. We have none tonight, but I'd like to take a point of privilege very quickly. I would like to recognize, we have recognized the newly elected commissioners and county mayor, but I'd like to recognize our exiting commissioners. And if you would, when I call your name, please stand, remain standing until I complete the list. David Gammon, District 1, has served us for eight years. Carol Cook, District 5, 32 years. Veronica Buchanan, District 6, two years. Joe Gurley, District 9, eight years. Wayne Blair, District 10, four years. And we could tack on a few over at the School Board, right? And we probably should. Rhonda Allen, District 11, 12 years. Robert Stevens, District 12, 12 years. Virgil Gammon, District 14, four years. Rod Key, District 19, two years. Steve Sandlin, Deputy to the Mayor, 28 years. Let's give them a round of applause. Members, you see, if you add all those up, that's a lot of institutional knowledge that will be vacating this chamber. And it's going to be missed, but we wish you luck and Godspeed as you continue and as another door opens.
Mayor, can I take my name plate with me?
I'm sorry?
Can I take my name plate with me?
Yes, sir. We'll turn you into assets, but I don't think it'll be missed. Nobody else wants to be called Wayne Blair, right? Just joking. The ones that are departing, I'd like to recognize Robert Stevens. Congratulations on your election. I recall Robert, when I used to pick you up at McDonald's and I was on my way to the Senate and I'd give you a ride to Nashville, you were on your way to law school, and we'd have good conversations about your future. You've done very well, and we hope, I hope, that you take the knowledge that you have gained here as you step into the State House of Representatives. You continue not only to represent Rutherford County, but this great state of Tennessee. Next, I'd like to call on Commissioner Reed for elections and confirmations. Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to complete our almost new representatives education. I think week after next, I'm supposed to take him to the fried tater. So that should take care of it right there. And elections and confirmations, commissioners. Item 1, election of notaries. You should have received these through SharePoint. There's a listing of notaries that may be found on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I have a motion and have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item 2, steering would like to announce one vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Current five-year term set to expire 10/2022. Item 3, steering would like to announce one beer board vacancy. Current three-year term set to expire 10/2022. Item 4, steering would like to also announce one codes enforcement adjustments and appeals board vacancy. Current three-year term set to expire 9/2022. Would also like to announce one PBA vacancy to fill a retiring member's seat. Remaining term set to expire 1/2028. Item 6, steering would like to confirm the reappointment of Jim Ava Water to the Planning Commission. Four-year term expires 8/2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and have a second.
Second.
Have several seconds. Commissioner Phillips on the first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item 7, steering would like to also confirm the reappointment Lois Miller and Amber Brown to the Insurance Committee, citizen-at-large. A two-year term expires 8/2024. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and have a second. Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item 8, steering wishes to confirm Ronald Wright to Rutherford County Board of Health. A four-year term expires 6/2026. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and have a second. Mr. Serrino. Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And item 9, steering wishes to confirm Leslie Cullen. Initial one-year term expires 8/2023. Steve Daniel, initial one-year term expires 8/2023. Clara Maxwell, initial two-year term expires 8/2024. And Michael McDonald, initial two-year term expires 8/2024 to the Juvenile Detention Center Board. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner P., Commissioner Johnson. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. I think most of them are here tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, item K, resolution to approve the consent agenda. Chairman Pro Tim Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum. I've reviewed the items that are on our consent agenda. We've already removed item 18. I find all of those items to be appropriate for the consent agenda, and without objection and without request to remove them, I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. Commissioner Rather, Commissioner P. Any questions? Any discussion? Singing none, without objection. Will be on the board, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is item N, reports from our standing committees. Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Chairman P., you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, we have several items on our agenda tonight, or fortunately, depending on how you look at that. We're going to try to move through these as quickly as we can and answer all the questions that you might have. First is item N1A, and this is the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Increased revenues for the SCAAP, other direct federal revenues of $44,846, with a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $7,150, with increased expenditures for other contracted services of $7,150, and SCAAP building improvements for $44,846. Also, under transfer to other funds, and this is to help fund the public health and safety buildings, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $8,059,038, and increasing expenditures transferred to other funds of $8,059,038. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Have a second. Commissioner Phillips. Any questions or discussion? Members will be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
19 yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is N1B, and it actually has to do with act of God. We had a lightning strike at our landfill. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows. For landfill operations, decrease in the assigned fund balance of $15,000, and that's for repair of the scales that were hit by lightning. Increase expenditures of M and R equipment, $15,000. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and second by Commissioner Piercy. Any questions or discussion? Singing none, will be on the board. We're having a little difficulty IT. I hope you're listening. All I'm seeing is the backside of your head. Members, been advised that we, if, since we're having some IT difficulties, we're going to have to move to a voice vote. Roll call. I think roll call would be better since it's dealing with money. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner David Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner P.?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blair?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Commissioner Key?
Yes.
Commissioner Goot?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrino?
Yes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is N1C, and this has actually got to do with additional money that we're giving to the ambulance service to pay for scholarships for some of our employees that are getting their EMT license. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical services, a decrease in assigned fund balance of $25,000, and increase in expenditures in service staff for $25,000. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and is there a second? Have a second. Commissioner Gammon. Lee was able to get the computer going again, so without objection, will be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
19 yes.
Motion passes.
Item N1D. This is basically a recap of the spending on the public safety and public health and safety buildings. And as you will see, all the expenditures are listed at the bottom. When we get to that, I'm not going to read that list, but it's there for you to see. Whereas, as the first and second tranche of the American Rescue Plan funds have been received and have been designated in part to construct public health and safety buildings and around the county, whereas project costs have been estimated and/or awarded for the certain buildings in the following amounts in fund. 127 Rockvale, $7,376,109. Ketchel, $7,294,610. Last Cassis, $7,379,267. Walter Hill, $7,379,267. The total on that is $36,761,610. Excuse me, I might have to pull my glasses out. I'm having a little problem here. Under the next fund, 171, you see the amount that we voted on earlier with Dale Webb for the $7,417,268. Also under that would be legal fees, architect, FFNE, and permits, data. That's $1,243,171 for a total of $8,660,439. And this is money that we had voted on last time to do these projects, and at budget, we basically are getting these totals, so you see exactly where you're spending. Whereas the funds from the American Rescue Plan are being accounted for, and the other special revenue fund and unencumbered funds need to be budgeted. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the other special revenue fund be amended as follows. The ARPA grant and increased revenues of $22,179,435. And as I stated earlier, I'm not going to read the expenditures. You see them, their data, data processing, architect, buildings, et cetera. A copy of the same is being attached heretofore as exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and second. Commissioner Piercy and others. Questions or discussion? Singing none, will be on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
19 yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is N1E, resolution. Whereas Community Care of Rutherford County Incorporated desires to construct a daycare facility on parcel 1 of the properties they currently lease from Rutherford County. And whereas Community Care of Rutherford County, Inc. will secure its own financing to construct the daycare facility and no the daycare facility, and no portion of the debt will be a burden to the taxpayers of Rutherford County. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Community Care of Rutherford County, Inc. be and are hereby authorized to construct a daycare facility on parcel one of the properties they currently lease from Rutherford County, and no portion of the debt secured to construct the daycare facility will be a burden to the taxpayers of Rutherford County. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Second. Commissioner Johnson.
Carol. I think you ought to have the privilege of seconding this because you've served so many years out there, and this is so dear to your heart. So I think you ought to have the privilege of seconding this motion.
Let the record reflect, second. If you will withdraw, Commissioner Phillips, the second. Let record reflect by Commissioner Carol Cook as a member. How long you been a member of the board? Thirty years on the board. That's, deserves a hurrah for the second. Commissioner Cook.
I am very proud to serve on the Community Care Board and to see the growth that we've had. And we, right now, we in the best growth that we've ever had. And I look forward. I'm going to watch you now and see if you put in the, the adult daycare that we need very bad. We doing things for children, but the children have grow up, well, does, they grow up to be old.
Oh, we all. Thank you. Have a motion and a second, members.
Members, we won't be on the board. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'm sorry. No. Let record reflect, Commissioner Allen and Stevens, no? Commissioner Allen and Stevens, or no? Next.
Item N1F, and this actually has to do with a grant that we've received from the state. Resolution. Whereas the state of Tennessee has presented, presented Rutherford County with a letter of agreement for a direct appropriation grant in accordance with Public Chapter 1130, Section 61, Item 68. And whereas the grant is in the amount of $2,500,000 and is to be used for planning related to the landfill, and whereas per TCA 68-211-813-B1A, the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board, the Planning Board, consisting of Rutherford, Coffee, Cannon, and Warren Counties, is authorized to administer the activities of the region. And whereas the Planning Board desires to create a pilot program to form a state-level commission for the purpose of maximizing state, local, and regional comprehensive solid waste management plans and goals with the direct appropriation grant funds. And whereas the Planning Board is best suited to identify the environmental and economic feasibility of the program. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a letter of agreement with the state of Tennessee. A copy of the same being attached heretofore is Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to accept funding in the amount of $2,500,000 to be used for planning related to the landfill. And be it further resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a sub-reception agreement, subject to county attorney approval, with the Planning Board to utilize a direct appropriation grant to create a pilot program to form a state-level commission for the purpose of maximizing state, local, and regional comprehensive solid waste management plans and goals. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. I have a second. Question? Discussion? Saying none will be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes.
Well, this is the last one, guys. Item N1G Resolution. And this has to do with the I-24 Buchanan Epps Mill Project. The state has come in and offered to enhance this exit for us with us doing some road improvement. Whereas the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, has provided information to Rutherford County concerning improvements to the I-24 interchange at Buchanan Epps Mill Road due to safety concerns and increased commercial and residential growth in the area. And whereas TDOT proposes improving beyond the immediate area of the interchange to include county roads and seeks county participation in the project of about $5,975,000 of the estimated total project cost of $45,830,000. And whereas TDOT desires to develop a local agents, agency project agreement with the county to implement the project. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayors and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a local agency project agreement, subject to county attorney approval, with TDOT to implement the I-24 interchange at Buchanan Epps Mill Road improvement projects. Resolve this 11th day of August 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion. We have a second. Discussion? Questions? Question, Gurley.
Can someone tell me exactly what this is going to do? Because personally, up in mind of the county, I can think of several places that we could spend five or six million dollars on, more so than Epps Mill.
Excuse me. I worked hard on that one. I had constituents out there screaming.
I'm just trying to get, I still represent the ninth district, even though 840 and, and Amville Road is not in the ninth, but it sure affects the ninth. 24 and Amville Road is. I know that's in the town of Smyrna right now, but I just asking exactly where, what that's going to improve.
Well, it's probably, Commissioner, it's probably one of the worst bridges on I-24 between Nashville and Chattanooga. It's, it is the lowest bridge in the TDOT system on I-24. It's been hit several times because the, the height is not correct. It's probably one of the most dangerous exits as well.
The Devil's Triangle out there is what it's called.
So when, after the governor passed the State of the State address, he put a lot of money into infrastructure. I received a call from Paul Degg, and he said that he knew that even going back to when Jim Tracy and I were in the Senate, that that was on the list, but it's been there for over 15 years, trying to get it there. And this was one that TDOT had identified for Rutherford County to, to bring it to the top. So it was the first one to be funded. But it's $5 million to, to, on the county's part, $1 million per year over a five-year period to improve the road from the exit to Manchester Highway, and then, of course, going towards our new school, which all that property is getting ready to develop. I believe there's a million square, a larger facility already being planned that's larger than Amazon right off that exit if this, this goes through.
Yeah, I'm not denying our, you know, I've tried to get off there several times, and it's, it's problematic when I used to have to go to Lynch Hill, get off there, go on the middle of the road, and, yeah, but. I just wanted an explanation of why.
Okay. Commissioner Harris.
I mean, you said most of it, but this, we're in public work. This is a no-brainer. This is, this of all the stuff that's ever come through this commission, this is one of them that I absolutely see this as a no reason for us not to do this. For $45 million, and we get five millions, and I guarantee you, if we had to do this ourself, it wouldn't even come close to $5 million. So I'm voting yes for this.
Other? Other comments? Discussion?
We'll mention that TDOT would be happy to spend this money in West Tennessee or East Tennessee somewhere. If we denied this project, that's what would happen. I guarantee you, it wouldn't be coming up to the ninth district. They've got other priorities probably in line in front of it.
Commissioner.
I think I hounded them enough. I kept calling, wondering. They told me two, three years down the road, so I'm very grateful.
Like the General Assembly and the Governor. Any other discussion? Saying none will be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes your report.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Next, we have Chairman Allen, Health and Education.
I just have one announcement. I know many of us, this is our last commission meeting, but for those of you who are on Health and Ed, we will have a Health and Ed meeting this month, so you do need to attend that on the 23rd.
Thank you. Next is Property Management. Chairman McAdoo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a couple of things to bring up tonight that we just got on the agenda, and both are emergency situations in which we will have to have an approval tonight. If we don't have an approval tonight, you don't have to worry about IT working, because it won't be working. So I'd like to come forward and present those right now.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to have a motion to suspend the rules to allow Ad and Dodd to come forward. Our maintenance director, have a second. Mr. Dodd, if you would, please come forward. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Dodd. Actually have two emergencies to come before you tonight, so let's start across the street at, at 20 North, Mr. Dodd.
We, we reported to the Property Management Committee last month that we have, we've come upon some, several issues with the renovation project that are starting to surface. We've had some, mostly just some condensation issues. We have found, there's excessive water damage isolated to certain areas. It's on all floors of the building, one through five. It initially started when Cody, he called the office. They have some, some server, some IT equipment that was actually getting wet because of the excessive water. So we're looking to, we're looking to move that equipment to another area. I touched on some insulation that we found missing, basically just some things that just got overlooked during the remodel. Nothing that can't be fixed. We brought some different contractors in. We've got some pricing, and we think, we think it should be something that's fairly easy to fix. We're looking at about $41,000. As opposed to some of the other quotes that we received from some of the larger companies that came in upwards of $180,000 to $200,000 to try to redo the entire insulation through all the duct. And, and we think we can concentrate on the first, at least concentrate on the, isolate the areas that are causing us a problem right now, and we think we can get that fixed.
So at Property Management, this past week, the presentation was made. We dug into it, find out what was actually happening. And if you recall, when we remodeled 20 North, the Cadell Construction Company out of Kentucky was the remodeling construction company. They called in another company to clean out the air ducts, and they ended up cutting over 50 holes in our air conditioning ductwork. Some they never repaired. So you had warm air going into the cold air ducts, and it was actually in some areas in different, all of the five floors, it was raining down onto the suspended ceiling. Down on the first floor where IT has its servers, we have several hundred thousand dollars worth of IT serving equipment, and they actually have an umbrella over the top of that right now. We declared this, Commissioner McAdoo says we've got to do something tonight, so that's why it's before you, for an emergency expenditure through.
Fan Mechanical?
Fan Heating and Air. A local company here in town. They think that they can, they can solve that, but at the same time, I think that we need to call on our legal department to check in, even though the warranty, the one year warranty on the construction of that, remodeling of that building, we need to look at what damages could be done for them. Some of the holes, I just covered with a piece of duct tape and a cardboard, and one stuck a rag in it, some of the holes. So I think there's some damages that we might need to take a look at. Asked by the attorney about our property insurance, we have $100,000 deductible unfortunately, so it's not going to cover that. So we've got to make the request tonight. All right, $41,000.
Could I make a motion at this time?
That would be appropriate, yes.
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and go with the Spectra Court of Tennessee, approximately $41,000 to take care of the condensation problem over at 20 North.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Questions? We'll be on the board.
The motion is to amend the general fund to pay for this as well. Okay, I'm just making sure.
Motion is to amend the general fund to pay for this on an emergency basis. Is that correct?
And to go with fans.
And, and to go with fans. Our Spectra Court of Tennessee. That is the quote. That's before the members on your desk. Okay, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk. Motion passes. Mr. Dodd. Second, second emergency.
So the Community Care of Rutherford County, for the last two years, it's, it's my understanding that they're, they've been, they've been renovating GNF wings.
That is correct. The Kristi Houston Grant.
So when I came, when I came on Tanner Faust, he, pretty, pretty, pretty early on, he started calling the office complaining about roof leaks. So I went out there to meet him one day and, and look around. I wanted to see the renovation. It wasn't, the renovation wasn't being completed in a timely manner. And while I was out there, they, obviously, they'd already started construction on GNF wings while there was still water leaking through the, through the roof in those wings that they're, they were remodeling. So basically, the property management asked me to have the roof looked at in an effort to try to correct the, the leaks before the renovation is completed. That way, whatever investment has been made in this renovation isn't ultimately damaged before it's even completed. So I brought in a engineer, Rinks. So, I brought in a engineer, Rinks, and got the, got the inspection. I believe you have the information in front of you on their findings, their recommendations. That estimate came in, in a high $700,000 range, up to $800,000. We reached out to, that's for a traditional EPDM rubber-type roof system with a 20-year warranty. The other, the other option that we've brought to you tonight is the Roofing Solutions of Tennessee. That system is, I guess, a third of the price.
Some members at Property Management the other night, Richard Rinks, which has done business with Rutherford County for a long period of time, Mr. Manken, when he was Director of Management and Property Management, had used them for a long period of time, and as Mr. Dodd said, they use a, a rubberized EPDM roof with gravel on top of that. You should have on your desk or on your SharePoint pictures of some of the roofs. There's one picture in particular on Page 5. It actually shows this black substance that's actually, because of the extreme heat that we've had, it melted the tar that was on top, and there's holes in the metal decking, and that's the black running into the newly renovated G-wing from that roof. So, with the sensitive population of our senior citizens there, we felt like it was an emergency. The Property Management Committee did send it forward. However, it was brought up in the committee meeting that we should check with Aztec, because the, the price from Richard Rinks out of Cookeville came in at $800,000 on the 21,000 square feet. The, one from Roofing Solutions, which uses the Aztec Reply System that we used on the courthouse here, on the Sheriff's Department, on Journeys, on the old and new maintenance buildings, we've used that product. It's an acrylic liquid. What they'll do here, they went up last week, I believe, or early this week, and took core samples of the roof. It did qualify for their system. They, they used moisture imaging equipment to find where the moisture sections were in the roof, and they sent us, their bid, it came in at 12:00 today for the 22,000. They will remove the tar and the gravel. They'll come in and replace the sections of metal decking that has holes in it, and then they will put a 3-inch foam core, and then apply their acrylic over the top of that. They also said that it will reduce the temperature going from a black tar roof to the white substance that we have used, like at Sheriff's Department and on this building. It will reduce the temperature of the roof by 70 degrees, which should help the HVAC in that, on that roof. So, that's what Property Management has sent to you tonight as another, another emergency to take from ending fund balance. The 206?
686.
686. 206, 686. Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The reason that this roof is an emergency issue is because to apply the acrylic, we have to meet a window temperature. So, it started tonight, approve it tonight, then we will be in that window of putting this acrylic on this building. So, and as you can see, that the other roof will come in around $800,000, and we're looking at $206,686 for this. But the main reason it's an emergency, we got to meet that window before we can install that roof.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'll have to tarp the roof until spring. They cannot apply the liquid once the temp, core temperature outside is below 45 degrees. So, that's probably going to hit sometime in October. So, that's, that was the reason Property Management brought it directly to you.
And, Commissioner, not to mention, but the, the window that, that, of the renovation to be completed. I mean, that's just as, as much of a reason to, to fix the roof. So, you're protecting the investment you've already made.
That's correct. So, based on the information that was presented tonight, I'd like to make a motion that we approve going with Roofing Solutions for $206,686 to a roof, I think a section F and G.
Well, it's, it's a larger section than that.
Is it?
21,000 square feet.
21,000 square feet of the Community Care Center.
Commissioner, those sections are just where the, that's where the leaks are.
Motion, second from Commissioner Phillips.
Can you add the wording in there to amend?
And the motion would be the same as last amendment to the fund balance to be given to Roofing Solutions. Is that correct? You okay with the second, Commissioner Phillips? Any, any further questions or discussion? I think none will be on the Board members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Next, we have Public Safety Committee. No report. Next, we have Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Kush?
No report.
Next, we have Steering Legislative Governmental Committee. Commissioner Harris?
Commissioners, we have created a board to oversee the County Courthouse Museum, and we are asking to confirm Greg Tucker, Pettis Reed, Mary Watkins, Bill Shacklet, Carol White, Bill Jakes, Joe Lodel, Marty Lufman, and Dr. Van West to the Historic Courthouse Museum Board of Trustees. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, item O, other business. Commissioner Pete?
The other night at Public Works, we discussed the LOL with Pratt. At that time, having read the contract and really not liking what I read, I had decided to vote no on that. Now, we've been looking at this for four years. This is not something that I'm trying to jump the gun on any of our new commissioners either. What I'm proposing tonight is that we look at this, but it would be looked at by our county attorney and the attorney that, the environmental attorney that we have hired, and let them make some recommendations to us on this LOI. And if you look at your under other business on your iPad, you'll see, I see the attorney has already made some changes in the right direction there. Regardless of what we vote tonight, this will come back to the new commissioners and new commission that will be seated in September. So, even if we didn't look at it till September, this would still have to take the same process, or at least in my mind, we'd need our attorneys to look at this, say, hey, this is the best path for Rutherford County to take. Having said that, like I said, I've, I've looked at this long and hard. There's a, a lot of, a lot of different issues there. Those of you that are on Public Works, you know them. We've looked at many, many people. The thing is, there's multiple facets of our solid waste problem. Part of it is, are we going to recycle? If we are going to recycle, Pratt happens to be the best, the biggest in the United States, if not the world, on recycling material. If you recycle and you sell your recyclables to someone else, more than likely, they're turning around and selling it to Pratt. So, if we go with Pratt, we're basically cutting out the middleman and enhancing the value of the products that we'd be recycling. Like I said, there's several things I want to stress, basically, is I don't want this to come back in the form that I first saw it in. Like I said, there's already been some changes. I hadn't had a chance to look through all of those changes there. And again, this no means is a dodge to get around the new commissioners and the new mayor. As a matter of fact, I've, I've talked to Mayor-elect. He was aware I was going to talk about this tonight, and got an interest in this, just like the rest of us. One thing about Pratt that I liked, and one thing that I have, one of the biggest drawbacks that I had, was working with the city of Murfreesboro. These guys, among other things, have decided they, they would pick up our recyclables at our high schools, actually put compactors in, but they'd also do that for the city schools, by my understanding. Two, one of the big things was traffic. My understanding is, there are only going to be 12 trucks per day, if this is agreed upon, going out of that facility, I mean, into the facility, and there would be six leaving until the spur would be built, at which time there shouldn't be any leaving. They would go by rail. I'm sorry. Get it a little bit closer here. But anyway, having basically said what I wanted to say, now I'll get the mic up there where you can hear me. I apologize, guys. But having said all that, I, I want to make a motion that we enter into a letter of intent with Pratt. I can leave it at that, but my intent is for this to go to our county attorney and our, our other attorney, that, our environmental attorney, and come back to the commission, to the new commission after he's seated. That's my motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Cook on the second. Now, discussion or questions? Discussion or questions?
I have to comment. This come from Public Works the other night on a 4-3 vote, based on the facts. We did not have enough information. One thing from our solid waste director, we could not get tonnage rates. We had no idea what it would save us compared to giving the access to our 20 acres away for a dollar a year for 20 years. We have no comparison of numbers to work back and forth to see what kind of benefit it is to us whatsoever. In my views, of course, I always have one, it's benefiting Rutherford County the least. It's benefiting other counties a lot more, because we are not even ready for the Pratt step. It's a good idea. It would be great if we had 75% to 80% of our residents recycling all their trash, but we don't, and we're pretty good ways from that. My opinion, we need to wait, let it go back to Public Works, let Pratt come and present their letter to us in person, and answer some of our questions for us that we couldn't get answered, and give Bishop time to get the answers he didn't have to come to the next meeting. Now, that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Pete?
Well, like I said, this was, at Public Works, it was a 4-3 vote. I was on the side that said, let's not do it. But after looking at this, for the very same reasons Commissioner Piercey's giving, we need to find out what it's going to cost. And we're not going to find out what it's cost until we sit down at the table and say, okay, this is what we're going to agree we would charge to haul stuff. This is what we're going to get per ton for X material. Until we have those facts and figures, we don't know what it's going to cost us. We don't know what the benefits are, and, and we wait 30 days, we're going to do the same thing. Let's go ahead and get the ball rolling, so we can see some figures. And yes, it'll come to Public Works, and yes, it'll come back to the full commission. I say we start this ball rolling. Otherwise, we're putting it off and kicking the can down the road for another month.
Comments? Other comments? Question, question?
Thank you, Chair. Nick, this question is for you, and it's something I've, I've struggled with. You know, as Chair of Public Works, it was a 3-3 tie vote till it got to me as Chair, and I voted against it, because there are still a lot of unanswered questions. Financial questions, is it a good deal for us? Is, you know, what is the return of investment? The issue I had was, all the information was going through the mayor's office and not Public Works. The questions that we had, Pratt wasn't there to answer. It was coming through the mayor's office. So, we really don't know how many trucks. We don't really know if they're going to put compactors at the school. And remember...
They're here tonight.
Okay. Remember, we're, we're already recycling our cardboard and our plastics. So, we've already reduced our, our percentage that goes to Middle Point. I don't see how they're adding any more unless they want to pick up the cities at Curbside or the counties at Curbside. But what, my question, Nick, is, Nick, what is the legal description of an LOI? I mean, if it's what we've been hearing, it's just a, a couple of groups getting together and hashing out some details on a potential contract. And if it's, if that's the case, why do you have to require two signatures for people to just sit down and have a discussion? That's the part I don't understand. The fact that we have got ourselves burned years ago for a contract that is going to haunt us for a while, if it's just, you know, a couple of chickens getting together, talking, why do you need to have signatures on a piece of paper to do that? So, please explain that to us.
Yeah, I'll do my best. So, we know that a contract that is envisioned by this, it's entitled a more definitive agreement. That's mentioned in this LOI. So, the parties to this document acknowledge that there are many more terms and conditions, pricing figures, and many more details that need to be hashed out, negotiated, and agreed upon prior to entry of any sort of binding obligation. I think the purpose of a letter of intent is twofold. First, it's to acknowledge that both sides have an interest in doing business with one another. And so, I imagine that Pratt doesn't want to take certain steps and expenditures to do geological or environmental surveys of this land over on Singer Road, and taking other steps to move towards a more definitive agreement, because it'll cost them some outlay capital to investigate that. But on the back end, the county has an interest in remaining flexible and not being bound by a contract now, so that it continued to negotiate the definitive terms of the deal. So, the short answer to your question is, no, this is not a binding contract. It is an LOI. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't say that there is case law out there where LOIs are the subject of lawsuits, okay? That's just the nature of the world that we live in. And so, the idea is to ensure that your LOI is expressly clear, and that it could, in, in your best efforts to make it not be able to be interpreted as a binding contract. And that's the reasoning why there's some red line comments... And that's the reasoning why there's some red line comments that I've put in here in the short time that I've had to look at it. And I think that Commissioner P's intent here is, if the will of the body is to move this forward, that before any, any county official is going to sign this, this, a final version would have to come back before this body, before it could be signed. And so between now and the next 30 days, whatever negotiations can, can happen to shore this up, I'm happy to work with Pratt's lawyers and representatives in that regard. And know that this LOI is not going to be your long, longer agreement for not only the ground lease that's being envisioned by this, but also there's a separate recycling process agreement that was attached to the Public Works meeting. But it was obviously a template, and it wasn't fully vetted out, and, and that in large measure needs to be done part and parcel with the deal, if it's going to be with Pratt. And in this LOI, it acknowledges that before there can be a binding agreement, you all have to come to your definitive terms on the processing aspect of it. How much are they going to pay for your material, et cetera? And that, that hadn't been hashed out yet.
Commissioner Curley.
Yeah. My comments more along the line, just mentioned that we're already recycling plastic, but whatever we're doing is not working, because in the last two months, twice, almost once each month, I've, I've been recycling for, since recycling was in Rutherford County. I took my plastics to the convenience center, the container's full, the doors are shut, so I, you know, most people would have just thrown them in the thing, and I took them back home, accumulated more, and took them back the next week. This week, Wednesday, I was able to dump my plastics. But that was two weeks' worth of accumulation. But that's happened twice in the last two months. So whatever we're doing, we need to do better because it's not working. So I don't know that, whether this is the right answer, but whatever it, whatever we can come up with, that it's an improvement over the current process, would be an improvement. Because I don't want, you know, I just see more and more stuff. A lot of people just, as we see driving down the interstate, and I know it's 942, the, but we've been here this long, and, and this is the last time I get a chance to talk. So, you know, it's, it's called a filibuster, right? But, you know, what our Correctional Work Center people do, if you drive down the interstate, if I was just anybody and didn't know better, I'd just take it and dump it out on the interstate. Or still better, there's some little cubbies on some of these county roads that are even better, maybe head down, I see Commissioner Gammon waving his finger, maybe head down toward Laverne or somewhere or another, and, and dump my stuff out. Because that's what happens a lot of times. It gets dumped in absolutely the wrong place. And so I don't know that this is the right answer, but we've got to keep looking. And I know we've been looking now for, what, two or three years? Because I've been to Sevierville, I've been to Waste Way, and other places, and so it's incumbent on the, the new commissioners to find a solution to this, because so far, and we've got to get, we've got to get the other entities on board. I'm talking to all the commissioners-elect. The, because with the, more and more people coming in, we're going to have more and more trash on the side of the road, and we've already been experiencing it. And when I take my trash, and I make a conscious effort to take my recyclables, and I've got about five different recyclables, to the convenience center, and then there's no place to put them, then, like I said, I'm dedicated, but a lot of people get real discouraged in the filibuster.
Other comments? I'll, I'll make a comment. Members, four years ago, yes, you know, you talked about, we went to Sevierville. We have, we put out RFIs, we received 29 RFIs, went through the process of looking for a solution. And it actually started in the administration before I came in. They were BGG, BGG, I believe, out of Virginia, they were working with. Under the leadership of, of Commissioner Kush, we went through the RFIs, then the RFPs, we received nine. We went through not just one interview with them, but we boiled it down to the top three. And what the committee settled upon was, was Pratt was their number one, the number one selection to handle the waste stream, to reduce it by 30 to 40% going to the landfill. Number two was Rock City, Rockwood, Rockwood, out of Lebanon, to take all of our CND, and then, of course, there's got to be someplace to take your anaerobic waste and et cetera. All this is doing tonight is not a commitment, it's a letter of intent to pass the baton to the new commissioners, to let them start working with, with one of the largest recyclers in the world. They're in the top three recyclers in the world of corrugated cardboard. Their, the plastics they take, they have an end product where their plastics, your plastic water bottle, they take, clean them and chip them and send them to Dalton, Georgia, where they make carpet. So they have end products for everything that they do. They're coming, they know the growth is here. All they want to do is sit down with this next commission. This letter of intent is passing the baton from this commission to the next, to let them start working together. Other discussion? Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. My concern with this really echoes that of Commissioner Piercey, and that is, all solid waste solutions are driven based on volume. And so from what I understand, Pratt intends to bring in recyclables from other communities. I also understand that we're not on the same page with the city of Murfreesboro, which is 50% of the volume that the county produces. So we're not taking care of 50% of our own, and we're bringing in other people's. That doesn't feel like a solution that we want to proceed with tonight. So I have every confidence that this Solid Waste Committee is going to figure this out. It just feels premature. Entering this at this moment in time just feels premature.
Other discussion? Commissioner Piercey.
Based on what you've just said, we have no idea whatsoever if any of the other entities are going to come in and help us. They're yet to come to the table and say yes, or say much of anything. We are not ready for this vote. It needs to go back through committee and come back through to the new commission. If you skip this committee step, we just wish to do away with our committees, and bring all our ideas to the full commission, and save the taxpayers the money we're getting to go to a committee meeting. I'm asking you to consider not supporting this vote. It doesn't need to happen, and that's all I can do is ask you.
I have a motion, other discussion? I have a motion and a second.
If you would, please clarify the motion. There's been so much discussion, I'm not sure I'm clear about it.
Sure. The motion, I believe, you want to read the motion, Madam Clerk?
I may need some clarity on this.
All right, he can help you.
Proposing it, okay, it's, what I have, is proposing it be looked at by the environmental attorney about the recycling, which is solid waste.
No, I'll take that as it. The motion was to enter into the LOI with Pratt, with consultation with the attorney and Butler Snow, environmental attorney.
That's correct. And- Reviewed by both of them, and then to come back to us-
Be reviewed.
For, for the commission to look at.
That's what I think is the clarification part from, that Mr. Pe, Commissioner Pe just provided, is, is to move forward with this LOI with Pratt, between Pratt and the county, subject to the review, the county attorney and the environmental lawyer, with the intention to bring a version back after the attorneys have reviewed it for this commission to approve. Is that, and if I've misstated that, Commissioner P, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's, that's pretty well it. When I say the commission to approve, I'd like for it to go back through the Public Works Committee. I'm not trying to bypass committee, you know? And as Commissioner Kush, Chairman Kush pointed out, there was a three-three vote the other night. If I'd have voted the way I'm voting tonight, it would have been four-two when it came to him.
So you've heard the motion, Commissioner Phillips?
I'm not 100% sure that I'm still clear on this, but let me go back and revisit Public Works. There was a lot of discussion at Public Works. Commissioner Dodd brought that up. I'm in communication with Commissioner Dodd right now, on my cellphone, and he's in favor of moving this forward, because it cleared up his questions about getting legal advice and moving forward with the LOI to get us started in this process. If we pass this motion tonight, I'm assuming that we have to send this back to Pratt, so, because of all the changes that we made-
Correct.
And it would expedite that process along the way.
That's correct.
I'm not sure about sending it back for the full commission. My recommendation, and if there's an amendment that needs to be made to the motion, that it go back to Public Works-
I think that would be the proper-
At our next, at our next meeting.
That would be the proper flow, right?
Yeah, I think that that, if, that's fine, yes. And, and, and you wouldn't necessarily have to amend it if Commissioner P says that that's part of his motion, and Ms. Cook seconds that again, then I think you're good.
I'd already stated I wanted to go to-
Yes, sir.
Public Works.
Commissioner Cook, you're good.
So it would go back to Public Works. Let me just say that every member, member of the Public Works Committee last week, everyone, said that this is the process we want to go through, but we're really concerned. We just got this document yesterday, which was 24 hours before, and they were concerned about that, get some legal opinion. And I think that's what's happened, and the reason it's brought back up tonight. We've got the legal opinion, we've got the clarification from our attorneys, and the next step, if we approve this, is to send it back to Pratt, and if Pratt's okay with it, then we bring it back to Public Works, and we start the process.
Yeah, yeah. And you might have some additional changes that'll be made from Pratt at the Public Works meeting that will need to be added into this.
Clear now. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Members, let's go on to board. I have a motion and a second, everybody understands that.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Court of vote, Madam Clerk.
14 yes, 5 no.
Motion passes. Members, I'm going to take a point of privilege. We're to the end of our schedule, and I know it's late and everybody's hungry, but I'm, I'm going to come to the well, because I have some departing words, if you'll bear What I want to say tonight to each one of you, that I couldn't be more proud. Couldn't be more proud of this commission for the last four years and what we have accomplished. And I want to take just a moment and recap. Some was mentioned in the resolution, that what we accomplished. But as we talked about, we got on the bus, second week of September, after we were all installed, and headed to look at the solid waste issue, and been working sometimes two and three times a, a month on this issue. You took a bold step tonight in the vote that you just took. We put our first budget together for 2019, 2020, because the budget that we had was from the previous commission. We lifted the pay table for all employees, 2.5% that first year. 2020, 2020, 21, we reclassified several positions and gave raises. 21, 22, we gave a 4% lift to our employees. And of course, this past year, we gave 22, 23, we gave 15%, unheard of, 15% to all of our employees, except for our public safety and law enforcement. We gave a 20% increase in pay, because we, we have always strived to set the gold standard, to be the best out of all 95 counties. We were able to break down the silos of our different departments when we got here. Everybody was not communicating. Everybody was doing their own thing. But I think that now, we've come together as a family. First up was remodeling 20 North, and now we still are having problems over there. But we moved probation into that building, and IT out of this building, and to make room for the museum, so we can still remember who we are and where we came from with the historic museum. We made this a living museum inside and out, that came home when, when the riots were outside, and we realized that we had a lot to protect with this building. We took a real gem with this building and turned it into a crown jewel. That's all people talk about. The tourism is downtown. People are coming back and enjoying sitting out and listening to the music, eating ice cream from across the street. Got two new restaurants coming in. It's, it's a place people want to come. The last Friday night, there was over almost 15,000, 1,500 people here. It was so great that we had to call the sewer company today, because it was overwhelmed our, our bathrooms. So we were able to get rid of the smell before you all got here tonight. Right after we took office, the pandemic hit. We didn't know what to do. We were all scared. All the, all the cities were concerned. We came into this room, everybody knew that we had to step up and do something. And the county actually came together by pulling all the department heads together, all the leadership from the different cities. We secured PPE. I remember going to Lisa and saying, I need a check for $60,000. I've got a contact in California who has a contact in China, because our first responders had no PPE, no gowns, no face mask, and they were going in not knowing what this disease was going to do. I asked Tab and Lisa for a check, and we, it was, we were, we were gambling that that check was going to go to a gentleman named Chan in California, that we didn't know, but it was through a contact of a contact. And we were so happy when those boxes were delivered over at Public Safety, and there were face masks in it. And we were able to equip our, our first responders very quickly. We engaged, we, we secured the State Farm Building at no cost to the county taxpayers to give the testing and vaccinations for all of our citizens. We engaged IT to create a county signup sheet to schedule, to schedule those who wanted vaccinations, because the signup genius that the state had put together, I think the governor is still mad at me because I told him their system sucked, and I think he thought I was, he got offended by that, but it did. And it worked. Our IT department made it work, and we had, we gave security to those who were over 65 that they could actually navigate and get an appointment to come get their shots. We got the court clerks, they volunteered to man the call center when we had the big snow, and they were over in the snow, they still came because of the concern, trying to help our citizens. We obtained a AAA bond rating, physically managed our county's operational costs, and were awarded, for the first time in the county's history, Moody's AAA bond rating, for the first time in our history, because of the way that you all worked, and working with the different departments. We asked them to bring us a needs budget and a wants budget. We asked them to bring us a needs budget and a wants budget, and we gave them everything that they needed and tried to give them some of their wants. But that helped us because we were physically sound. We're one of only three counties or cities in the entire state that has AAA bond rating, and that is because of the way that you all worked and ran this commission. We sold surplus county property, Commissioner McAdoo, through your committee. We went in and we were paying, just sitting on property that we didn't need, so we put it back on the tax roll. We auctioned it off, and we brought 1.2 million back to the tax roll at no cost to the taxpayers. Even Mr. Sandman threw in his services for free as an auctioneer, and just part of his duties. Thank you, Steve. We moved to the Enterprise fleet system. We were driving old Crown Vics and the, we actually had one, the engine actually fell on the ground out at the Correctional Work Center. The frame of that engine dropped on the ground. And one, you had to turn the key three times, wait two minutes, and try it again to see if it would actually start. But we went to an all-new fleet system with Enterprise, and we've got our people in new, secure, safety, with all the safety devices in those vehicles, so we can turn those in once they get some mileage on it and they get a new vehicle, and we keep rolling. We were spending the same amount of money. So that was a huge, huge deal for our fleet. COVID response, we received federal rent assistance, negotiated admin fees from 10% to 4% and 6% savings while assisting our citizens with back rent along with the landlords. We handed out, thank you. Thank you to our finance department. Thank you to REBO. Thank you to Lisa for everything that you all did. We handed out over $22 million in Rutherford County for those who were behind in the rent and those landlords who hadn't been paid because of COVID. CCRC building, the daycare, it passed tonight, and they will be well on their way of building a daycare facility that will hold up to 125 young people that many of our, our third shift, those departments, EMS, fire and rescue, for all those who, who work shifts and have no place to take their, their children, this will be available for all those employees that we have. It's another opportunity for them. We bought new turnout gear, new turnout gear for all of our firemen, even the volunteer fire departments, and we bought them volunteer, we bought the new extrication equipment, the jaws of life, even for our volunteer fire departments. This was a big one. We spent $18 million with Motorola, and we bought, went from analog to digital communication equipment for, for our walkie-talkies. We even gave them to the schools, we've got them on the buses, to where we can actually talk and receive in times of emergency, and we can communicate. Ambulances, sheriff's deputies, EMA, fire rescue, all public safety received a radio in that $18 million expenditure. We are in the process, we have two out of the ground right now out of six fully funded public health and safety buildings. We're taking those to the rural areas to provide quicker coverage, faster response time to help people's lives and preserve their property. Two ambulances, two fire trucks, certified tornado shelters in our rural areas. Two are out of the ground, the others are coming. And for this next commission, make sure that these continue to become reality. We approved perpetual care for rescued dogs, saving $12,000 for the Correctional Work Center. We renovated the historic courthouse, receiving the Main Street Design Award. We created Rutherford County Historical Museum, promoting the downtown local tourism. We replaced roofs on the courthouse, sheriff's department using cost savings technology, as you saw tonight. We renovated 20 North. We leased out part of 20 North to Child Protective Services through the District Attorney's Office, and we're receiving about $12,000 rent from the state. New offices, we added to the county archives. We added on to that building and tripled the size for archives as we continued to grow and gave room for the sheriff and the clerk offices. Under construction right now is one stop at the corner of Blackman and Blaze for Lisa Kroll. Finally, after all these years, she's getting a second location where 40,000 people live on the other side of the interstate. People will be able to renew her the tags. We're going to be leasing a building to the Department of Safety where you can renew your driver's license as well. County employees, we had a volunteer day. We went out to Lainiagra for a mealpacking event. We've done it for the last three years. We packed over 175,000 meals to be given to our citizens in need, for those who are food insecure. Packed them and gave them to every not-for-profit, Greenhouse Ministries, Salvation Army, Journeys, Doors of Hope, the probation offices, for those folks who needed additional food. We opened Rockville High School. We opened that whole complex out there. What a, what a great thing in Rockville. Even, even Commissioner Reed's got a construction head with a big R on the side of it, like a football helmet. We opened the new elementary school in Plainview these past four years, which was huge, in Yarrows District, Veronica. We have four convenience centers. Make, putting the word convenient back into the word convenience centers. Two are under construction right now. We'll have two more coming on, we're making them larger, bigger, at Rockville, on Weekly and Smyrna, Leanna and Walter Hill. We donated the old Rockville store, donated it, donated it back to the Rockville Historical Society. We led, Commissioner Reed led the charge to name the bridge over Broad, Blue Raider Bridge, brings recognition to our university. We implemented dual-stream recycling. Down this list, we ended emissions testing the last four years. It took longer to sit in line than it did to get the testing. Thank goodness it's gone. We're so glad for that. We're in the process of passing the baton on to this next commission to start working on renovation of the Goldstein's building because of the needs of, of that building, and it's going to be a nice addition, so make it look pretty. Those are some of the many things that we did this, these last four years that I'm so proud that we were able to accomplish. For those who are leaving, it's, I say thank you. For those who are staying, continue doing what you're doing. I want to share with you something that, that kind of I've always looked at and thought about, and this came back to me in my departing words to you tonight. Life is like a journey on a train, with its stations, with changes of routes, and with accidents. At birth, we boarded the train and we met our parents, and we believe we will always travel on our side. However, at some station, our parents will step down from the train, leaving us on this journey alone. As time goes by, other people will board the train, and they will be significant, our siblings, our friends, our children, and even the love of our life. Many will step down and leave a permanent vacuum. Others will go unnoticed, and we don't realize that they have vacated their seats. This train ride will be full of joy, sorrow, fantasy, expectations, hellos, goodbyes, and farewells. Success consists of having a good relationship with all the passengers, requiring that we give the best of ourselves. The mystery to everyone is, we do not know at which station we ourselves will step down. So we must live in the best way, love, forgive, and offer the best of who we are. It is important to do this because when the time comes for us to step down and leave our seat empty, we should leave behind beautiful memories of those who will continue to travel on the train of life without us. I wish you a joyful journey for the coming years on your train of life. I ask you, reap success. Give lots of your love and be happy. More importantly, be thankful for your journey. We may not have always agreed over the last four years, but I still love you because I know we all have one thing in common, and that is doing what is best for Rutherford County. As we pull into this station tonight, I will take the memories and accomplishments with me as I travel on. Lastly, I thank you for being one of the passengers on my train. I leave you with an Irish blessing. May the road rise up to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sunshine warm, sunshine warm upon your face, and the rain fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the hollow of His hands. God bless you. Anything else to come before us?
Mayor.
And breakfast?
Well, I wish. We're actually doing some construction out there at Kettle, and we're so crowded, we can't, we don't have enough room in the parking lot, so we've suspended that. But one other thing I wanted to mention, and Anthony Johnson's standing back there, I know he knows, and I know a lot of you other commissioners know how important it is that we work together. When I first became a commissioner, life was difficult here. Every time I walked out of this meeting room, I was so mad I could spit. And it took, it took a long time to realize that, you know, just because I wanted something that way, didn't mean I was always the smartest guy in the room, and I found out that compromise usually helped us out. But the thing I want to express mostly is, this commission has worked together better in the last four to eight years than I've seen in the 20s. I want to tell you how much I appreciate that, and not only with the commission, but also with the Board of Education. You know, we have fought tooth and toenail. We've had lawsuits. I know you remember them. But, you know, it makes a difference if we all, as the mayor, just point it out. We're all on that same train, and we're trying to get there and better this county. And that's, that's what I wanted to say. Now, of all the people we've been saying goodbye to tonight, I want to say goodbye to someone else here, and that's Lisa. Lisa's still got a few days left, and I'm going to hang on to her as long as I can. I love having her and Michael both where I can ask, ask my questions and be straightened out, and they both are wonderful. Lisa, I blame you a lot for our success and getting our AAA bond rating too, but sincerely going to miss you. Michael, you know what a, what a jewel she is too, but I guarantee you, if you and I pick up the phone, she'll come help us. Anyway, I wanted to recognize Lisa Nolan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have an event to promote. Last year, you guys were instrumental in helping with an event in its inaugural year. It was the 9/11 Heroes Run, took place on the county, on the Civic Plaza, at both mayors attending. We had static displays with EMS, fire, police, military. It was, it was a great event, and in fact, both mayors said, this is the most activity I've seen on this plaza ever. It's happening again, September 10th this year. Come out and support that, be involved. Several of you were involved physically last year. Thank you for that and do that again. Let me, let me challenge you, new commissioners, let me make a challenge and, and a charge to you. Represent your district. Be your champion for your district, but champion another cause too. Find your committee and dig into it. We all have passions. We all have unique passions. Commissioner Harris is passionate about opioid epidemic. I'm passionate about veterans. Commissioner Allen's passionate about turning lanes. I promise she is. But, but find your passion and dig into it. And I charge and challenge you, we're losing at least five commissioners that champion veterans. 17,942 in the last census. Somebody's got to pick up that ball, more than one. And if you need help, I promise I'll help you. You don't have to be a veteran, you just have to love them, and you have to support them. And here's my best word of advice as I leave and I pass the torch. Nobody told me this, I had to figure this out on my own. If there's ever a question or if there's ever anything you don't understand, you get up here and you get frustrated, you don't want to say the wrong thing. There is a drawer right in front of you, right here, that has all the answers in it. All you do, don't let anybody see you, you open the drawer and find the answer, and it will fix things, okay? That's, that's my advice. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Gammann.
Yeah, I'll be real quick. I just want to welcome the new commissioners going to have, especially the ones that's going to have part of Laverne. Now, there's some things that's passionate to me that I'd like, I'm asking you to finish, and I know these guys will be behind you and gals, but the addition to Laverne High School, it's, I think it's coming up next within, within the next year or so. I hope it comes up way before a year. Another thing is I'm working on, I've talked with the mayor about it, but I haven't, I won't get, I'm one of those likes to get all my ducks in a row before I present anything. And we've, and we've improved several convenience centers in the county, and we've got one that's very dangerous in Laverne, and I know it's on the list as well, but that, I've already talked with a landowner, I think I've talked with some of y'all about this gentleman that owned some land on Buchanan Street. It's about a mile and a half away from where it's at now, and it should help folks to get off the road. And it's got really dangerous, and that's been the biggest complaints I've got, is the convenience centers, especially here lately. I mean, nothing bad, that, that part, but something that we need to work as commissioners to improve. And to the mayor, I want to thank you. Anytime I've ever called, you've answered. If you were in a meeting, you called me back that day, and, and that means a lot to me. Same thing with a lot of the, get, get to know these managers and directors in the departments. The two ladies that works in the mayor's office, they sure made my job look easy because I could call them. They could, they would print things for me. I mean, they, they help, I know they helped every one of these commissioners here, I know that for a fact, and they really work hard. And that's some of, some of our, you know, we was talking about law enforcement, some of the others, and dispatchers not getting, that's some of the, the ladies that don't get a shout-out to every once in a while, but they, they will really help you a lot. They're, they're worth it. And adios.
I'll say one more thing. I didn't want, I asked Shanto if it was okay. I didn't want outdoing, but I, I put on your, your table tonight a Buckeye, which is supposed to bring good luck, and you can eat this one. So, didn't want to upstage Shanto on the candy man. Also put a new lapel pin. It's not the official symbol of Rutherford County, but it's one that a lot of commissioners seem to like, so it's on, on there as well. Anything else to come before us?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a few farewell remarks myself. This is my final county commission meeting after 12 years, and so I just wanted to say what an honor it has been to serve on this body. It's been an honor to serve and make a difference in the community. I would challenge anyone that's interested in serving to consider running for local office. Despite all the complaints and the headaches, it is very fulfilling to know that you're making a difference. I've also been very honored to have all of you as friends and the prior commissioners that aren't with us anymore. You're like family to me, and I definitely will miss seeing you at our committee meetings and our full commission meetings each month. Even though we may not always agree, I do consider everyone to be a friend and, and family, and I would fight for any of you no matter what. And then also, it's been an honor to work with our county employees and our department heads. They've kept us out of the ditch many times. They've given us great ideas, and they keep us on track. I would I would encourage all the new commissioners certainly to make friends with them and listen to what they say, because they usually know what they're talking about and give us great advice. To the new commissioners, you have some big issues to fill. This group is turning over a commission to you that is leaving you in great financial shape. I believe that you have a lot of opportunity and potential for the future, and you're being handed something in very good condition, so I hope that your goal is, like mine was 12 years ago, to pass it off to the next people even better than you found it. When I became a commissioner, Rutherford County had 262,000 people, and today we have about 100,000 more, which is hard to believe. But that comes with great opportunities and challenges. I believe we have met those challenges. We have built schools and additions, new courthouse, archive expansion, you name it, this commission has done it. It's been a challenge to fund all of this, but us working together has helped us solve these great problems. I'm very proud that we have made the commission more transparent since I've been here. When I got here, you got a stack of papers before each meeting, about five minutes before the meeting, that nobody had looked at. Today, everything is online, so every citizen out there can look at everything that we're doing ahead of time, and understand and ask questions. And I believe that's been a very positive change. I am so honored to have served here as the commissioner for District 12. I know the incoming commissioner for District 12, Carl Boyd, is a good friend. He's a good man. He's got a great family. I believe that you will all enjoy working with him, and he will bring a lot to this body. So I hope that you welcome him and treat me the same way that, or treat him the same way that you've treated me for the past 12 years. So with that, it's been an honor to serve, and I look forward to building further relationships with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Mayor Kessner.
Mr. Phillips.
My wife is watching at home. Kathy, put my supper in the microwave. I'll be home in 10 minutes. I moved to a drone.
I have a motion to adjourn. My last one. We stand adjourned.